And and made it so people can congregate, have commerce, made it feel safer, right? But the service was the street light. Now we're adding other things that not only reduce the cost of infrastructure itself, but make it so that there's new services that can go on to the city like 5G connectivity, right? So LA became one of the first 5G cities in America back in 2017, 2018. And that's because we started working together with industry practitioners to see what else we could do.
Very, very cool. All right, so you've worked with the city for a long time. I mean, you've worked in the mayor's office, you know, through a couple of tenures of different mayors. And now, now you're here and you've been here. What was the biggest surprise coming into this bureau when you looked around and saw what your opportunities were and what your challenges were? The scope of the bureau, the opportunities in the bureau, the history, the fun, the possibility, what was it that you really went, oh, wow, this is cool?
What I was most impressed with was the people when I came in here. Because of their willingness to actually try new things. And because of the people, we have tremendous potential, right? So when we're talking about these new technologies, these more efficient ways to light the streets, we're talking about connectivity with telecom partners, we're talking about dynamic lighting, we're talking about air quality sensors that can help inform policymakers about what's going on in their neighborhoods right now, right? So the people actually led to some of these progressions, right? These new things and these opportunities that we have. And so the bureau itself, with what it has, again, a quarter of a million streetlights, an electrical system, this penultimate electrical system, that when we're thinking about the future of the city, is going to empower a lot of the new services that we do now. We actually see ourselves now as more of a platform, right? So yes, we have the the street light, but there's many different things that you can attach to it, right? There's many different services that you can kind of create from that point there where where we have a very valuable piece of real estate on the public right of way that has energy.
Well, if people want to learn more about the 100th anniversary or just about how to call in if they need some help with the lighting on their streets or just have any questions, what's the best way for people to get in touch?
The best way for people to get in touch, well, two things, right? If there's any issues that you have with street lighting, please log your service requests with mileA311 or call 311 itself for all other things. And if you're inquisitive about our history, please visit la lights dot la city dot org.
Thank you so much. This is really, really fun. And that's a wrap on this LA Currents.
Hello, everyone. I'm Susan Huckle, and here's what's happening in LA this week. Roll out the red carpet, strike up the band, it's time to get this season of goodwill started. Councilwomen Monica Rodriguez and Heather Hutt joined the stars for a legacy event that's bringing all the holiday spirit, the Hollywood Christmas Parade.
Today, we're celebrating the 93rd Annual Hollywood Christmas Parade. And this is such a special occasion for so many members in our community that come together. So it's really special to be part of this time-honored tradition.
I came here as a kid, and we would bring hot chocolate and all that kind of stuff. You know, you waited to see Santa all night long.
I am always excited to see Santa. You know what? I've been on the good list all the time. Well, except for that one time in college.
One time, yeah, I remember.
Yeah, so I'm on the good list.
I'm excited to be here today because I'm receiving the humanitarian award for my philanthropic work within the community. I don't do it for fanfare. I just try to move in silence with that, and the community knows what I do because I do it for them.
While we take shelter and food for granted, not everyone has that. And there are young people that won't be able to celebrate this holiday season without Toys for Tots. So that's why I'm here.
All year long, this organization gives to children, not just at Christmas time. They give toys out all year, they give books out all year, they do services and leadership for kids all year round.
I really look forward to seeing all the Marines every year because as a daughter of a Marine, it makes me proud to know that this is a legacy that continues here in Los Angeles, and so I'm grateful for their work.
Represented as China, represented as Panama, Bolivia.
It's an international show tonight.
And it's so inclusive and really reflective of the diversity of Los Angeles, which makes it so uniquely different. When everyone sees all of the different communities that have come together to celebrate the holidays in this way, it's something that everyone can be proud of.
The holidays aren't about what you get. The holidays are about what you give.
There is nothing better than helping someone else.
Not everyone can do everything, but everybody can do something to make a difference. We need all of us to be the village that takes care of one another.
Be kind to each other, remember to check on your neighbors, and really have a wonderful holiday season.
Councilmember Isabel Harado joined LA Public Library for a groundbreaking at the Benjamin Franklin Library in Boyle Heights. This is a major renovation project, which will return the branch building back to the community with many improvements.
Today, we are at the groundbreaking of the Benjamin Franklin Library here in Boyle Heights. It was my first motion to figure out what is going on because the library has been closed since 2020. And less than a year later, we are here doing a groundbreaking to make sure it's open in 14 months.
It's taken a while. The Benjamin Franklin Branch Library has been closed for a while. There've been some issues with the building, but we're really looking forward to finally having our branch back. And staff is really excited to come back into the building and to serve the Boyle Heights community.
This building's going to be upgraded in terms of energy efficiency. We're going to be putting in some landscaping, some new HVAC systems, some lighting systems. We're also doing some improvements on the outside in addition to the landscaping. There's a new entryway and exitway, and we're going to do some refurbishment on the painting.
It's going to be state-of-the-art. It's going to be more green and sustainable. We're going to have better landscaping outside that is also going to be sustainable. And we're also going to have a new citizens' corner where folks can learn how to be citizens and take their citizenship classes. And at the end of the day, it's going to be bigger, more beautiful, and have this beautiful space for our community members.
Tenemos muchos recursos para niños, tenemos los libros, los DVDs, pero tenemos muchísimos recursos también para adultos. Por ejemplo, tenemos los servicios de New Americans, la iniciativa para nuevos estadounidenses, donde podemos proveemos ayuda con ciudadanía, con clases de inglés para el examen de la ciudadanía. Proveemos mucha ayuda, por ejemplo, también para personas que quieren aprender a leer o escribir con alfabetización para adultos. Y tenemos muchos servicios para la comunidad, y todos son gratuitos.
This library is more than just a place for books. It's a community resource hub. That's where kids can go to read, they can get tutoring, where seniors can get reprieved from the hot, hot sun. I'm so excited to uplift and make sure that this comes to fruition.
For more information about the library, please visit lapl.org.
A small support can make a big difference. The Department on Disability is helping senior Angelenos. Whether it's medical equipment or a ride to the center, a helping hand is allowing more seniors to live independent lives with dignity.
We are at a distribution event at the West Adams Senior Center, and we are giving out DME equipment for seniors. In that program, LA City residents can get either a manual wheelchair, different type of rolators. They also could get different types of shower benches, raised toilet seats, and air purifier.
This is a really amazing opportunity for our senior participants of the community to come out and get this durable medical equipment. It's so needed within our community.
Oh, I'm here today to pick up, you see, a rice toilet. It's helping me to be safe in my home. It's making life quality much better.
It goes without saying how dangerous it is for a senior to fall inside of their home. Having this available to the community is essential.
Well, they made announcement at my center, and they have us to sign up. And I checked off what was more important, transported me here, and I feel very independent by doing that. But this way, I won't have to ask, hey, neighbor, do this or whatever.
Well, I want to highlight that this program is very important to the city of Los Angeles, especially for the Angelenos that either are low income and the unhoused individuals. And I just want to emphasize how impactful this program is to the city of Los Angeles and how direct it helps people live independently.
The street we live on has an incline from the corner to my apartment, so I'm so glad to have that walker now. And I was very surprised about the room humidifier and the blood pressure equipment they offered me today. So I had a lot of things, almost like Christmas.
So I'm just so grateful that we have resources like this. You feel like you're not doing it by yourself. That's the major thing.
If anyone's interested in the program, they could apply at disability.lacity.gov.
Have a good night tonight.
A new bill strengthens protections for crime victims and witnesses. LA's Department of Water and Power offers three steps to take against utility scams. And Angelenos are invited to shape the city's mobility action plan. These stories up next on City Beat.
City Attorney Heidi Feldstein-Soto and LA County District Attorney Nathan Hockman recently celebrated the signing of the Victim and Witness Protection Act into law, authored by Assembly Member Pilar Chiabo. This bill strengthens safeguards for survivors of domestic violence, human trafficking, and other crimes. The Act protects against post-charging dissuading intimidation after charges have been filed. According to Feldstein-Soto, the bill will empower victims and witnesses to help law enforcement without fear of retaliation. For more information, visit cityattorney.lacity.gov/news. The Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, LADWP, joined with Utilities United Against Scams to give customers an understanding of how they can protect themselves. Because scammers often use pressure and scare tactics, this year's campaign offers a three-step strategy to slow down, verify, and stop the scam. To slow down, end the conversation on unexpected payment requests, as the LADWP will reach out on a past due bill and provide assistance information. To verify, customers can contact the LADWP directly by using the phone number on their bill or by logging on to their LADWP account. To stop the scam, report incidents immediately to the LADWP and local law enforcement. For more information, visit ladwpnews.com. The Los Angeles Department of Transportation has launched its Mobility Action Plan to identify long-range capital needs and is gathering input from Angelenos. The Mobility Action Plan will provide a framework for how the city invests in streets, sidewalks, transit, biking, and walking. The plan will consolidate projects across the city and include the Department of Transportation, Public Works, and other city departments. Angelenos are invited to share their experiences and priorities to help shape a transportation system that works for everyone. Participate in the survey at mobilityactionplana.org.
LA City's Fire Department hosts a special boots-on-the-ground event for young Angelenos thinking about joining the service. Not only do the teens learn about the range of skills needed for the job, they get to put them into practice, and it's proven to be a path to success.
So today, we're at Camp Spark in Panorama City, and we are putting on this camp to show young ladies and men kind of introduction to the fire service so they can get a taste of this career and be excited about it.
Camp Spark is open to all individuals from 14 to 18 years old, but it's primarily geared towards young ladies. It's a women's empowerment camp. We have firefighters from all over the city of Los Angeles who come here today to help these young women and several of the boys that are participating in it learn what it's like to be a firefighter. They learn about the mechanical aptitude, but most importantly, they build leadership skills. They're going to walk away from here feeling empowered, feeling like they can take on the world.
So we're here to provide them with an introduction to some of the tools that we use as firefighters, some of our tactics and how we actually fight fire, and also how to be prepared for emergencies. Being in California, you know, we have a wide array of stuff that happens, and so we kind of give an introduction as to how we respond to emergencies and disasters within our city.
Here, we're just doing different things that you would do if you were a firefighter, climbing ladders, using hammers, using power tools, and just like seeing what's on the rig. I feel like it's a once-in-a-lifetime experience, like there's not many other places that you can use chainsaws and climb these ladders and everything.
My dad's a firefighter. He's been doing this for a long time, and he always comes home and tells me like all these cool stories about his job. It's like, oh, that's cool. Like, I want to do that. And he told me, he's like, hey, there's this camp going on, like, what do you want to do? I was like, yes! And I think it's a really cool experience for girls to like come try it out and like just see what it's all about.
A lot of this stuff I didn't think I'd be able to do, and I was able to do it and succeed, and it makes me want to be a firefighter even more.
I decided to come to Girls Camp and explore because I wanted to know what it is to be a firefighter at first. I've been doing this for five years, so of course I enjoyed it. I think the job is really hard to get, but it has to be hard. You're putting your life on the line, you know? So like you have to train like you like depends on it. It prepares you in the long run as a firefighter because you're easing into it slowly. You're not just going at it in one shot. So you can't be scared. You have to just go head forwards, know you're the best person you could be at the moment. You're competent, you're strong, and you'll do good. You just have to like try your best.
If you're anticipating coming to a camp like this, we ask that you have a great attitude and you come ready to work. We're always going to make it a fun environment. We want it to be positive and supportive and encouraging. But we're here to work too. As firefighters, our physical abilities are very important, and so our campers get a little taste of that with some of the stations and some of the activities that we put on in this camp.
They see the energy that the campers have when they walk off our drill tower grounds, and they feel the energy that they're getting here. They're really, really motivated by our own firefighters, who are leaders in themselves. We've actually had success rates, not only with the Los Angeles Fire Department, where we've seen graduates from the camp become members of the Los Angeles Fire Department, but they've also joined other fire departments. And then we've also seen other fire departments emulate what we've created here in the city of Los Angeles.
LA City's Department of Civil and Human Rights held its annual ceremony to recognize Transgender Day of Remembrance. Family and friends gathered to name the community members' loss and honor their legacy.
We are here tonight to celebrate our ancestors who are no longer here with us, our transcesters. So let's make sure that they can still hear us, even though they're not on this earth. Make some noise for every single one of them, y'all!
Today, we are here for a somber ceremony to recognize Transgender Day of Remembrance. This gathering is something that hurts my heart every year. 281 people lost their lives to violence because of their identity. We also know that in the United States, 58 people lost their lives. 58 people in the United States of America. Two of those people actually died in LA City proper. We want to send a strong message that hate has no home in Los Angeles.
Onyx Cornish.
Onyx Cornish.
Jay Flores.
Jay Flores.
Luisa Rivera.
Luisa Rivera.
Their names rise through us as blessings. Their journeys did not end in darkness. They continue as guiding lights, inspiring us to build a world worthy of their dreams.
Onyx cared deeply for others, and they would drive around town with food for local unhoused and even help them rent motels for the night.
They worked to help domestic abuse survivors who were escaping dangerous situations, and they were beloved by their community.
She is remembered as a vibrant soul who was full of love and dreams, and she was known for her kindness.
Leah's family, including her sister Jen, still celebrate her birthday every year.
Part of what we're doing tonight is remembering them by honoring their name, honoring who they were, honoring their legacy.
A 68-year-old Latina transgender woman is remembered by an enormous impact in HIV/AIDS advocacy and on fighting for rights and dignity for sex workers.
We only have this one life, so please honor, honor the trans people. Honor them, love them.
And now we have an administration who is targeting us, telling us that we are other, telling us that we don't belong. That hatred leads to more violence, that hatred leads to more death, that hatred leads to more names on this memorial tonight.
I know that the world is telling you that you're not worthy or that you shouldn't exist, but I'm going to show you that we can defy that. We are a small but mighty community. Rest in power, Subly.
All roads lead to the LA Auto Show, at least for a few days. The show is the ultimate celebration of car culture, and whether you prefer the classics or want to experience the latest in motoring technology, it's all under the convention center roof.
This is our time of the year. It's the 118th edition of the LA Auto Show. Everything for people to see, from gas to EV to hybrid, from compact to large SUVs. So people can come to the show. There's a bunch of different automakers they can go to with no sales pressure, no hassle, and over 50 models to actually test drive or ride. A lot of these automakers indoors have ride-alongs where you can get inside a car with a professional driver.
So I just came with my son to check out the LA Car Show. Great experience. It seems like every year, the exhibits, they level up. This Jeep exhibit was really cool. It was almost like riding a roller coaster. This is probably the craziest thing that I've seen so far.
We have this big space to be able to bring families and/or if you're just by yourself or a group of friends, whatever it might be, and there's so much to do here. This is, I think, my fourth day here because there's so much to see. Right now, I'm actually taking a look at this camera car that I would not expect to see at the Toyota booth. There's a lot here that I didn't expect.
LA Auto Show is in my backyard, and we get to talk about a new film that I've worked on called The Drifter, where this car, Lola, is the star of the film. So Toyota has been very supportive of the film, and they said that we could bring Lola and display it to all of these wonderful people in Los Angeles during the Thanksgiving holiday. One of the things that the automakers really understand, especially about Southern California, is the car culture. It's like nowhere else in the world. It's literally the car culture capital. And what they do when they build their exhibits is they try to connect to people through those passions. So you might be into muscle cars, you might be into camping, off-roading, whatever it may be, and you see those different lifestyles come to life in all of these exhibits. And then there are the car culture and auto enthusiasts. They also want to see the new cars, but also enjoy all of the car culture. We've got classics and lowriders, all sorts of interactive exhibits, virtual reality. So there's a little something for everyone, including kids. You know, to be able to come during the Thanksgiving holidays with your kids, fathers and mothers, and celebrate the thing that brings the world together, which is passion for cars. We need more of this. We need more things that bring the world together.
When it comes to car culture, LA definitely leaves every other city in the dust. In this week's feature story, the annual Valor Awards go to Los Angeles firefighters who go beyond in any 911 situation. And this year has been an extraordinary one in LA. Even as they fought for others, Los Angeles firefighters found themselves personally impacted by January's wildfires.
This is our annual Valor Awards at the iconic Dodger Stadium, and it's an amazing evening that we all look forward to each year because this is the best of the best. These are our members who go above and beyond the call of duty, who are rightfully awarded.
It's definitely not something that we sign up to receive. It's definitely not something expected or anticipated, but it's humbling, and people that put on this badge and show up on these 911 calls, we're there for you, and we want to do what's best for you. It's pretty humbling that there's recognition for it. We're not used to that. It's, we're just happy and to be doing the job that we get to do. It's really a privilege.
It's a desire to help. It's a desire to make a difference that draws firefighters to this profession. Our firefighters were tested this year. The Palisades fire truly tested all of us. I recognize that there are many people here today that were affected personally by the fire in some way.
I was caught off guard. Everything was a total surprise. I've never seen a fire come that close and that far south into Altadena before. My wife, who was pregnant at the time, was thinking, okay, I got to get her out of here. Got her in the car. I see the neighbors' cars. They're not aware of what's going on or how close the fire is, so I started knocking on the doors, trying to get out as many people as possible. I was thinking that maybe if I was able to get to the station, get my gear, I'd be able to defend some of the houses. Walked in, and my crew, everybody was gearing up and getting ready to go to Palisades. And the captain, Captain John, he's looking at the TV, and Altadena comes on the screen, and he gives me a look. I give him a look, and he was like, take what you need to go. And I made it back to Altadena, and the city was on fire, just like Palisades, Altadena. The water grid tanked, and thank God for Riverside Inns in '73. Without them, my block would be gone. On the opposite block, three houses had already fully burned down, and now it was creeping up to the private line in the back. So I flaked out the holes and turned the water on and had no water. So by that time, neighbors had been throwing me their extinguishers. I ran to the house, got a shovel, throwing dirt and trying to put out the spot fires as best as I could to prevent the other structures from taking off. Stayed up for four days. Friends, family, they were all sending me their addresses. They had just left. They didn't know if their houses were up or down. And I would go to where their homes were and have families on the speakerphone and, you know, is it there? And then they would, one person would start crying, and the whole room was crying, and I'd have to tell them, I'm sorry, it's not. Did that like 15, 20 times. There is nothing that prepared me for that. It's a very strange space to be in because there are two cities of people and families that totally lost their homes, and I have a home, and I'm having a hard time with that.
I want to say to you that we are with you, that the Los Angeles Fire Department is here for you, and together that we are going to move forward, working to rebuild a better Los Angeles, a stronger Palisades, and for those who are affected by the Eaton fire, stronger communities all around.
In this week's Things to Do, catch the 45th Annual Black Doll Show, enjoy a winter festival in Expo Park, and celebrate Jane Austen with the LA Public Library. All this up next on Things to Do.
Join the Department of Cultural Affairs for the 45th Annual Black Doll Show, which will run until February 14th, 2026. The show's opening reception takes place on Saturday, December 13th, and will feature live music and performances. This year's show is titled Sower of Seeds: Creating a New Tomorrow. Through handmade and collected black dolls, the show reflects on today's uncertainties and asks what new worlds can emerge when imagination and resilience take root. Head to the William Grant Still Arts Center for the Black Doll Show, opening on Saturday, December 13th at 3:00 P.M. For more details, visit wgsac.wordpress.com. L.A. City's Department of Recreation and Parks hosts Expo Center's Winter Festival on Saturday, December 13th. Join Councilmember Curran Price and Wrenckin Parks at Expo Park for all the family fun of this winter holiday festival. There will be music, entertainment, games, community booths, and yes, even sledding. There will also be giveaways, which are first come, first served. Head to Bill Robertson Lane for Expo Center's Winter Festival on Saturday, December 13th, beginning at 10:00 A.M. For more information, see the Events tab at laparts.org. The enduring work of Jane Austen will be the hot topic at a book discussion and tea party to honor the writer's 250th birthday. Head to the Venice Abbot Kinney Memorial Branch Library to celebrate Austen's birthday with a tea party for all ages and book discussion featuring the classic Pride and Prejudice. Tea, scones, and other delightful treats will be generously provided by the Friends of Venice Library. The Jane Austen 250th Birthday Book Discussion and Tea Party takes place on Saturday, December 13th at 1:00 P.M. For more details, visit lapl.org/events. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's all for this week. I'm Susan Huckle, and from all of us here at L.A. This Week, thank you so much for joining us. Remember that you can watch us online anytime at lacityview.org. We're also on Instagram, Facebook, X, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. This Week.
Regulately scheduled meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, the 10th day of December. Public comment for this morning's meeting will be taken in person in this chamber. Madam Clerk, if we could begin our proceedings by calling the roll.
Yes, sir. Bloomingfield, Harris, Dawson, Hernandez, Hut, Herado, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Hart, Price, Roman, Rodriguez, Son, Martinez, Sarwoslawski, ten members present in court, Mr. President.
All right, first order of business.
Approval of minutes of December 9th, 2025.
Councilmember McCosker moves. Councilmember Price seconds. What's next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval. Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Yaroslavski moves, Councilmember Hutt seconds. Can we run through our agenda?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, would counsel like all items to go forth with today?
All items forth with today, without objection.
Items one through 22 are items noticed for public hearing. The Los Angeles Department of Building and Safety recommends to confirm the liens for items two through nine, 11, 12, 15, 17 through 20, and to receive and file the liens for 13, 14, 16, and as much as the liens have been paid, and to continue items 10 and 21 to Wednesday, January 14, 2026. For item 22, the Planning and Land Use Management Committee report has been submitted and is available online under Council File 09-0969-S4. Items 23 through 59 are items which public hearings have been held. For items 29 through 37, the Trade, Travel, and Tourism Committee reports have been submitted and are available online under their respective council files. For items 38 through 40, 49, 53, 54, and 59, the Planning and Land Use Management Committee reports have been submitted and are available online under their respective council files. For items 51, 57, and 58, the Budget and Finance Committee reports have been submitted and are available online under their respective council files. Please note, for item 55, no action should be taken inasmuch, this is a duplicate of item 30. Items 60 through 74 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
All right, without objection, those items are before us. Specials members, I see Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, item 41, I'd like to continue to January 29, 2026. This will reflect the action that was taken in Plumb Committee yesterday. Item 51 for a separate vote. And item 52, I'd like to move the Government Efficiency Innovation and Audits Committee report.
All right, Councilmember Park.
Good morning, Council President. I would like to call items 13, 14, and 16 special to receive and file, and 53 for remarks.
Got it. Any other specials to my left? All right, Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call item 52 special for amendments, and item, excuse myself from items 48 and 51, because my wife's employer has worked with an organization listed on this item in the past.
48 and 51, all right. Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, Council President. I would like to call item 65 special for comments, please.
All right, 65, Mr. Price again.
Also, I want to move the Economic Development and Jobs Committee report. I want to move the committee report.
For which item?
Item 52.
52, Economic and Jobs Report, all right.
Is there a second to Mr. Price's motion?
Second by Mr. Soto Martinez?
And Ms. Rodriguez, for your motion to, item 52, to move the GEIA report, is there a second to Ms. Rodriguez's motion? Mr. Bloomingfield, thank you. And is there a second to Ms. Park's receive and file of the liens?
Second.
Oh, thank you, sir.
All right, other specials members, Councilmember Yaroslavski?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like for item 48 to move the BNF reports, and for 51 to move the BNF reports. Thank you.
Is there a second to Mr. Bloomingfield, thank you?
Mr. Soto Martinez?
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. President. Item number 69 for a separate vote, please.
69 for a second separate vote, okay. Mr. Nazarian?
Thank you, Council President. Continue item 10 until January 14, please.
Item 10 to January 14, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Item 63 for Councilmember Padilla, if we can please hold that.
Okay. Item 63 on behalf of Councilmember Padilla. Any other specials members? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, what items are before us?
Mr. President, there is a request for, to continue items 10 and 21 to January 14, 2026, sir.
All right, without objection.
And, what council? Just. through 40, 42 through 47, 49, 50, and then 54 through 59, sir.
All right, those items are now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15/9? 15/9?
All right, what's next?
Next, council can go into public comment, sir.
All right, before public comment, Mr. Bloomingfield.
Before public comment, quick thing. Brian, come over here for a sec. I wanted to introduce a special guest that we have today, a colleague from another city. Brian is the mayor of Glendale, but not the Glendale that we know, Glendale, Wisconsin. He is here for the DNC meeting, and he is a fellow board member of the DMO, Democratic Municipal, in fact, he's now the president of DMO. And he's here visiting us, and I wanted to give him a warm welcome, and welcome a council colleague from another city. So, Brian, thank you for being here. Thank you.
Welcome, welcome, welcome. We put on good weather just for you. So, thank you for being in Los Angeles and having the conference here. And we have a presentation this morning, a very exciting presentation, be led by the council member from the 13th District, Mr. Soto Martinez.
Thank you so much, Council President. It's, I am, thank you so much. I am honored to stand here today with three leaders from the Congress of the Republic of Guatemala, Mr. Luis Enrique Ventura, Mr. Raúl Amilkar, and Mr. Duvalier Castañón. I had the pleasure of meeting with them earlier this morning and speaking about their work in Guatemala, the challenges that they are facing, and how they are working to make Guatemala more progressive in Central America. The men behind me are trailblazers, helping steer political power to the left in Guatemala for the first time in decades. And I think we can all learn from them as we fight our own right-wing establishment and try to save our own democracy. I invited them here today to say, give a few remarks about their experiences in Guatemala, because as the city of Los Angeles that has the largest Guatemalan population outside of Guatemala, it's important to understand what our residents are going through as it pertains to the government in Guatemala. Moreover, in the United States of America, there are an estimated 1.8 million Guatemalans who they call the United States their home. So, without further ado, speaking on behalf of all three of the gentlemen behind me, I'd like to introduce Mr. Duvalier Castañón from the Congress of the Republic of Guatemala, who will be giving his remarks in Spanish and be translated by here by our local translator. Mr. Castañón.
Thank you very much. Good morning. Señor presidente, honorable consejo de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, muchas gracias por este espacio, nos sentimos en casa.
To our honorable Council President, thank you so much for having us, and we feel very much at home here.
Soy Duvalier Castañón, y me acompañan dos congresistas más de la República de Guatemala, país donde habitamos cuatro pueblos, el Maya, Garifuna, Xinca, y Mestizo.
And my name is Duvalier Castañón, and I am here accompanied with two other congressmen who, and we represent the Republic of Guatemala, who has four different areas, representing different indigenous people, the Maya, the Garifuna, the Xica, and the Mestizo.
Guatemala, en lengua nativa significa tierra de muchos árboles. Es parte del centro de América, posee 22 naciones y 24 idiomas, una de la civilización Maya, una de las más prominentes de Mesoamérica.
In Guatemala, the Republic of Guatemala, in its indigenous language means land of many trees, where we make up 22 indigenous nations with 24 different languages, including some of the most prominent languages in Central America.
Somos alrededor de 20 millones de habitantes, y varios de estos millones viven hoy en el extranjero, la mayoría en Estados Unidos de América, con mayor presencia en California, particularmente en la ciudad de Los Ángeles.
In the Republic of Guatemala, we represent 20 million inhabitants, and many of which live, many millions of these inhabitants live in other countries like the United States of America, more specifically, Los Angeles, California.
Nuestro estado tiene 204 años de historia, pero no fue hasta mediados del siglo XX cuando pudimos tener las primeras elecciones democráticas e iniciar así la larga y difícil construcción de una república democrática e independiente.
Out, in our country, we have about 204 years that we have been, we have existed. And it wasn't until the turn of the 20th century that we were able to have our first democratic elections, which started our long road towards a democracy in a more progressive nation.
Lamentablemente, nuestro, este proceso fue interrumpido diez años después, en el contexto de la guerra interna que duró más de, de la guerra fría. Este proceso dio paso a más de tres décadas de conflicto armado interno que trajo dolor, enfrentamiento, y provocó un enorme retraso y subdesarrollo al país.
Unfortunately, this progress was disrupted 10 years later due to a civil war that lasted longer than the Cold War, with 30 years of pain and fighting that has, that has delayed our, our progress towards more democracy.
Esto está reflejado en los terribles índices de pobreza, pobreza extrema, malnutrición, analfabetismo, y emigración que padecemos.
And this is reflected in the poverty, the malnourishment, the illiteracy, and the immigration out of the country that has wrought this country.
Las primeras grandes olas de migrantes guatemaltecos hacia el norte iniciaron allá por los setentas y ochentas, producidos precisamente por la guerra. Sin embargo, las subsiguientes empezaron a ser motivadas por la búsqueda de oportunidades para salir de la pobreza e incluso romper el yugo de la miseria.
And so, the first immigrants that left the country, it started in the 70s and 80s, and that was mainly because of the war. And others felt motivated to look for better opportunities afterwards, and sought other places to live as well to escape that same poverty.
Ahora que digo esto, yo también hubiera recorrido esos más de 4,000 kilómetros hasta el norte de, de manera irregular, al igual que muchos de mis hermanos. Esto, si no hubiera contado con una escuela cerca de mi casa, y de no haber tenido unos padres maravillosos, especialmente una madre, que decidió entregar su vida para que yo pudiera tener una propia.
And with that said, in an area that represents over 4,000 kilometers of, of distance, it wouldn't have been, it would, many people do not have the same access as I have had. And if it had not been for a school that was close to my home, and two wonderful parents, specifically my mother, I may have not amounted to who I am today.
Hoy estamos aquí para hablar en nombre de nuestros hermanos y hermanas guatemaltecos, personas decentes y muy trabajadoras, ejemplos de amor y compromiso con su tierra, ya que como bien se sabe, el fruto de su trabajo aquí representa allá, en tierras guatemaltecas, vida, muchas horas de vida, traducidas en alimento, techo, vestuario, y educación para su familia y comunidad.
And now, today, I am here in name of my Guatemalan brothers and sisters, who are hardworking, good people, and many of who work here, and the fruits of their labor go back to their home country to be able to provide food, water, and shelter to the people that live there.
En esta bella ciudad habita una vasta cantidad de hermanos guatemaltecos, que en su mayoría trabajan y aportan no solo a su país de origen, también suman al desarrollo y bienestar de California y los Estados Unidos de América. Esta ciudad, Los Ángeles, es muy importante para Guatemala.
And so, not only in this beautiful city do we have many of our Guatemalan brothers and sisters who are working to support their, their country of, of origin back at home, but they're here also to support this very country in California, in the United States of America.
El chapín, como nos llaman coloquialmente, no solo aporta al desarrollo económico, también demuestra su valía en la cultura, en el arte, en los deportes, en la academia, en la ciencia y la tecnología, y en muchas otras áreas del conocimiento de la sociedad. Porque el hombre y la mujer de maíz no pide mucho, solo una oportunidad para poder salir adelante.
And so, as chapines, which is the colloquial name that we use for Guatemalans, they are not here just to provide and contribute to the economic development of this country. They also contribute in arts, academia, sciences, technology, sports, and in many other areas, because the men and women who are of, of the corn, who come from this country, need very little to be able to thrive.
President y honorable consejo, quisiera compartirles también la esperanza que está alumbrando la vida sociopolítica de nuestro país. Muy natural de nuestra sociedad, hemos adquirido resiliencia, la cual nos ha permitido avanzar a pesar de la terrible adversidad que nos ha acechado desde siempre.
And so, to our Council President, I would like to share the same hope that we have in our country as we move towards a better and more progressive sociopolitical climate, and we show that same resilience, that despite the war and everything that we have faced as adversity, that we continue to thrive.
En el año 2023, el pueblo de Guatemala cedió una vez más la oportunidad de cambiar su rumbo, ya que durante décadas había estado capturado por redes político criminales que mantenían un régimen de corrupción e impunidad casi imposible de romper.
In 2023, Guatemala faced another change in trajectory to try and break the criminal fabric that is present in the country, to end the impunities that have been wrought in the country due to corruption.
Guatemala empezó a dar buenas noticias, ya que no bastó con lo sucedido en las elecciones del 2023, sino que además se convirtió en un ejemplo de cómo un pueblo se levanta pacíficamente por más de 100 días para defender la democracia y sus instituciones, un valor que parecía muy distante de las mayorías marginadas históricamente.
And so, Guatemala has been able to have the good news of the results of the election of 2023, where its people were able to stand up to fight and protect democracy, to be able to move forward, and to be able to uplift even the most underrepresented, historically underrepresented communities in the country.
Fueron los pueblos más sufridos y desposeídos los que lideraron la defensa y conservación del orden democrático de nuestra república, los pueblos indígenas. Dieron un ejemplo de dignidad, sabiduría, y liderazgo a la que se sumaron los otros pueblos, garantizando así la alternancia en el poder concretada a la media noche del 14 de enero de 2024.
And it was the, the, the areas where they suffered the most who were the leaders of the country. and it was the, the, the areas where they suffered the most who were the leaders in this fight to protect this democracy, those were the indigenous communities whose leadership helped to be able to make the progress that we made and achieve what we achieved mid, at midnight of 2024.
al finalizar mi intervención quiero expresar nuestra más profunda gratitud al pueblo estadounidense, especial, en especial al pueblo de los, de la ciudad de Los Ángeles por acoger y cuidar de nuestros hermanos y hermanas, por abrirles la puerta a su empresa, de su hogar y de su corazón.
and to conclude, I would like to share my deepest gratitude to the people of the United States, particularly in Los Angeles, California, for taking in and giving a warm welcome to my brothers and sisters, not only in the workplace, but also in their hearts.
sabemos muy bien de cómo han prestado atención y han actuado en favor de los migrantes guatemaltecos. Sepan que nuestra patria también está abierta para recibirles, para mostrarles sus maravillosos paisajes, sus imponentes pirámides y sobre todo su gente, ese pueblo hospitalario y amistoso.
and so, we are also well aware of all the work that you have done in order to stand up and to protect our Guatemalan immigrants and we would like to share that it is a, the mutual openness of our country. Our doors are open to you and we'd love to welcome you to our beautiful land where we have powerful and beautiful pyramids as well as beautiful people who are warm and welcoming.
presidente y honorable consejo de la ciudad, agradeciendo al concejal Hugo Soto Martínez la invitación, extensivo a la señora alcaldesa Karen Bass y a ustedes por su atención. Muchas gracias.
and so, to our council president as well as the distinguished city council, thank you so very much for your time and attention. Thank you to council member Hugo Soto Martínez for the invitation and I would also like to extend a warm thank you to Mayor Karen Bass and to everyone else for your time.
thank you so much colleagues and council president for giving us this opportunity and muchas gracias por venir aquí and on behalf of the city, we want to present with them a certificate of recognition honoring our partnership. They are traveling the rest of the United, many cities across the United States, but we welcome them here in Los Angeles. Please, one more land, one more, one more time, round of applause for our congresspeople from Guatemala.
thank you so much and welcome, welcome, welcome. They are staying Los Angeles to be productive and enjoyable. Before we go to public comment, I want to call on the council member Lee.
thank you, Mr. President. I apologize for late notice on this. If we could have item number 20 continued to January 14th.
all right, item number 20, continue to January 14th without objection, that'll be the order. And I also have council member Hernandez.
yes, thank you, Council President. Nomás quería decirles unas palabras, por favor. Good morning. Muchísimas gracias por estar aquí con nosotros. Yo me llamo Eunice Hernandez, soy la concejal representando el primer distrito y represento las áreas de MacArthur Park, Pico Union, Westlake, donde están las poblaciones bien altas, de gente de Guatemala y hay, están hablando diferentes lenguajes, no nomás español, pero muchos lenguajes indígenas y estamos moviendo un proyecto al frente donde vamos a designar una área de ese vecindario como Guatemalan Square or estamos tratando de figurar lo que quiere la comunidad, pero es que entendemos todas las, todas las inversiones, todo el trabajo que hace esta comunidad para nuestra ciudad y queremos darle el reconocimiento que se merece. Muchísimas gracias por estar aquí con nosotros y compartir sus historias y lo que están haciendo también en Guatemala. Thank you so much, Council Member, for bringing them forward and I look forward to continue to build with our leaders in Guatemala and thank you again. Thank you, Council President.
thank you so much. Council member Padilla.
council member Soto Martínez, thank you for bringing this presentation. It's always really, you know, inspiring to hear from our, from representatives that represent countries where we know we have plenty of constituents from, so I want to thank you. Les quiero dar las gracias a ustedes por estar aquí. Me acuerdo que también vinieron el año pasado y también me gustó mucho escuchar todo lo que están haciendo para todo lo que es este, para mejorar su país, pero también en lo que están haciendo para trabajar con nosotros, para seguir enseñándole a todos los que vienen de su país que están aquí, que no se pierde esa conexión y que, you know, les, les importa saber que al estar aquí la cultura y todo lo que es ayudar a los que siguen en sus países sigue siendo parte de la conversación. Yo tengo vecinos donde vive mi mamá, que son este, de Guatemala, una historia muy bonita de un señor que trabajó por siete años hasta que pudo traer a su esposa, sus hijas, sus últimos dos hijos nacieron aquí y se trajo casi nueve hermanos y a cada uno, año por año, les ayudó a hacer su propio negocio. Muy buena gente, muy buenos trabajadores, contribuyentes a nuestra comunidad de Los Ángeles y me va a dar mucho orgullo poder decirles que ven el video de hoy y que sepan que seguimos aquí en Los Ángeles apoyando a su país y trabajando juntos. Son gracias por estar aquí y por representarlos muy bien.
thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Soto Martínez, and thank you again to our guests. We appreciate you all so much. All right, with that, we are prepared to go into public comment and we need a city attorney to prepare us for public comment.
to people providing public comment, when it's your turn to speak, please state which items you'd like to speak to. You'll have one minute per item, up to three minutes total for the items open for public comment on the agenda. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the council president. At that point, you need to get immediately and clearly on topic. If you do not do so, or if you again stray off topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time and we will move on to the next speaker. The items open for public comment on the agenda are items one through nine, 11 through 19, 22 and 60 through 74. So again, the items open for public comment on the agenda are items one through nine, 11 through 19, 22 and 60 through 74. Items number 10, 20, 21 and 41 have all been continued. Members of the public may also speak for up to one minute for general public comment. During general public comment, members of the public may speak to any of the items or anything else in the city's subject matter jurisdiction. A couple more announcements, if I could have the interpreters make this first one aloud to the room, please. If you require a Spanish language interpreter, please make sure to pause every few sentences so the interpreters can interpret.
si necesita interpretación en español, por favor, recuerden a pausar después de cada frase o dos para darle al intérprete la oportunidad de traducir.
don't worry, we will pause your time while the interpreters are interpreting, so you will get the same amount of time as everyone else. Thank you.
y no se preocupen, les pausaremos el tiempo mientras el intérprete está hablando, entonces recibirán la misma cantidad de tiempo que las otras personas. Gracias.
additionally, if you have submitted an accommodation request under the ADA to the clerk's office, or if you would like to make use of the wireless handheld microphone for public comment, please, once you hear the name that you signed up under called aloud, please raise your hand and get the attention of the sergeants at either side of the council chambers. They will do their best, once they see you, to get your, the wireless microphone within a timely manner. One final announcement, the order in which we take public comment is at random, that is to say, it is randomly generated. So in order to help us accommodate as many people as possible and to run an efficient and orderly public comment, period, we would ask that you please wait until you hear the name that you signed up under called aloud, and then once you hear that, you can line up in any order on your left-hand side of the council chambers. Thank you.
Mr. President, just for the record, for item 41, that item was continued to Wednesday, January 28, 2026, sir.
I will begin by calling the following names: Jovi Delvin Enriquez, Eva Garcia, Harriet Elliott, Laura Esquivel and Ronaldo Linares.
so as we wait for those speakers to come up, just one reminder that once you get to the podium, please let us know which items you'd like to speak to and slash or if you would like general public comment. If you don't let us know, then we will give you your one minute of general public comment. Thank you. good morning, which items?
mi nombre es, buenos dias, mi nombre es Delvin Enriquez, voy a hacer comentario público general.
okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
un minuto adelante.
soy miembro de SAGE del 2002, estoy haciendo comentario general, vivo en el sur de Los Ángeles, estoy aquí apoyando a ULA, que financie el programa de Stay House LA.
yes, I have been a member of A since 2002. I'm doing general public comment. I am from South Los Angeles and I support ULA and I'm here so that we can do the Stay House LA.
en mi caso, cuando más necesitaba Stay House, me ayudó en la corte. Yo no tenía abogado gratis y en ese momento de desalojo, el juez me dio tiempo para conseguir abogado gratis.
yes, and in my case, Stay House LA has really helped me when I was in court because I was facing eviction and the judge allowed me to receive legal representation without any cost.
por medio de SAGE y Stay House, me dieron más tiempo, eh, el juez me dio más tiempo en la corte para estar en el apartamento.
and because of SAGE and Stay House LA, the court, the judge has given me more time in, in court to get legal representation and to be, to still remain housed.
ustedes tienen el poder para apoyar a ULA, por favor, no queremos que más gente viva en la calle, muchas gracias.
you guys have the power to support ULA, please, we do not want more people to be on the streets, thank you.
thank you, next speaker. good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
eh, Ronaldo Ernesto Linares.
Ronaldo Ernesto Linares.
vengo por algo de una deuda que, de un código de mi casa.
I'm here for a debt about some, one of my housing codes.
lamentablemente, hace mucho tiempo pusieron un código, tenía una deuda con la ciudad.
I had a debt with the city unfortunately because of the housing code.
de principio pensé que era una, un cobro fraudulento, ¿verdad?
at first I thought it was a fraudulent charge.
con el tiempo me di cuenta que era un código, me pusieron de algo en la casa, tal vez, no, no estoy muy seguro de qué, ¿verdad?
but as time passed, I realized that there was a sanction or a code that was put in my house, I wasn't sure.
lamentablemente, transcurrió el tiempo y la cuenta se incrementó.
unfortunately, as time passed, the amount in the account went up.
hasta el momento he tratado de pagar, pero no, no dan facilidad de pago. Sí dan, pero solo pocos pagos, entonces no he podido, lamentablemente.
and I have been trying to, to pay, but unfortunately, the, it's, it's very, it's very difficult to be able to do this in payments.
eso.
that is all.
okay, thank you. Next speaker.
muy buenos dias.
good morning, which items?
mi nombre es Eva Garcia, soy miembro de colectivo Poder Unitario.
my name is Eva Garcia, I am a power, I am a member of Colectivo Poder Unitario.
y estoy aquí para el comentario general.
here for general public comment.
quiero pedirle a las concejales que por favor protejan a ULA.
I want to ask the council members to please protect ULA.
para que ganáramos ULA, tuvieron un requisito de ponernos 60,000 firmas. Logramos 90,000.
and to, to be able to support ULA, they asked us to make 60,000, to get 60,000 signatures, but we actually got 90,000.
la ganamos en la boleta.
we won it in the vote.
es un voto democrático del pueblo.
it's a democratic vote from the people.
ahora los ricos dicen que ULA no funciona.
and now the rich say that ULA does not work.
porque les duele a ellos.
because they see them.
pero necesitamos que ULA sea protegida, porque ULA protege a inquilinos para que no sean desalojados.
but we need to protect ULA because ULA protects tenants who are facing eviction and homelessness.
con una visión también de vivienda diferente a la que estamos viviendo.
with a vision of having a different housing situation that we are living right now.
ahora recabamos mil millones.
and now we raise hundreds of that, of millions.
cual no se han podido usar por tantas trabas que nos ponen.
which they are unable to use because of how many object, obstacles we face.
exigimos y pedimos que se respete este voto democrático que se ganó y dejen de hacerle tanto daño a la que ULA no sirve.
and we ask you to, to respect this democratic vote, we urge you to respect this democratic vote that was won fair and square.
a nuestras comunidades, ULA le sirve.
for our communities, ULA is of benefit.
y a los ricos son unos llorones.
and the rich are a bunch of crybabies.
ganamos la medida A y nosotros no nos quejamos porque nosotros pagamos los impuestos. Pedimos protecciones para ULA ahora.
we want measure A and we don't complain because we pay taxes, we want this measure right now.
good morning, which items?
buenos dias, mi nombre es Laura Esquivel.
good morning, my name is Laura Esquivel. ¿Sobre cuáles temas quiere comentar?
sí, es comentario público.
public comment.
okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
un minuto adelante.
okay. Ah, mi nombre es Laura Esquivel y trabajo en el aeropuerto de Los Ángeles. Ahora en este día vengo a darle un mensaje al presidente Marquis.
my name is Laura Esquivel, I work in the Los Angeles Airport and now I am here to give a message to the president of the council, Marquis.
muy a mi pesar me he enterado de que usted puse una moción el viernes.
unfortunately, I found out that you pushed ahead of motion last Friday.
usted sabe que nosotros hemos ganado el salario olímpico.
and you know that we won the Olympic wage.
ya lo hicimos por dos veces.
we did it two times.
y no es justo que ahora vengan y nos quieran otra vez estar atacando con eso.
and it's not just that you come at us again attacking us with this.
nosotros somos los que trabajamos el aeropuerto.
we are the ones who work at Los Angeles Airport.
nosotros lo movemos la economía de Los Ángeles.
we are the ones who move the economy of Los Angeles.
y no estamos dispuestos a perder lo que hemos ganado.
we are not willing to lose what we have won.
hemos luchado por dos años.
and we fought for two years.
señor Marquis.
Mr. Marquis.
piense lo que está haciendo.
think about what you are doing.
nosotros somos trabajadores.
we are workers.
por favor, siga siendo el líder que es.
please continue to be the leader that you are.
no sea el grinch de nuestra Navidad.
don't, don't be the grinch of our Christmas.
before the next speaker begins, I would like to call up Daisy Song, Jackie, Alfonso Directo, Esmeralda Nigrete and Karen Ramirez.
good morning, which items?
ah, the, I said two and three. I, I just actually want to know, I, I know you guys are under a lot of pressure, but why you didn't take her thing about nuisance abatement and liens yesterday? She had a property on Sunset, she offered it. I thought you should have taken her suggestion, that's all. Okay, I'm moving to, oh, also, yesterday I talked about a book called Lawless, this is what.
okay, so are you moving to general public comment now?
no, not yet, okay.
okay, if you want to talk about the book, you need to move to general.
okay, we're a general, all right.
okay, you have one minute.
this woman is a lawyer and a professor, Lawless is what Trump is not, is. Also, this guy is a Republican and he's still a Republican and I highly recommend this book. And I highly recommend this book. He said under the second administration of Trump, you won't be able to get a book out of the library if you're a Democrat. Okay, I'm going to talk about Silence Sound. El patente de Silence Sound, el sonido no en los oídos pero sí en el cráneo es un secreto, okay? It's so secret que yo fui a Staples y no querían compartir el secreto y pagué 50 dollars.
Yes, the sound that they do, you cannot hear it in your ears. You hear it inside your skull. I went to Staples, but they did not want to give me money back. But I paid for it and they did not give me it.
Yo compré dos veces, yo compré dos camisas, seis meses MGA en urban eyes. Y no me dieron mis camisas porque la tecnología es secreto.
Yes, I bought 12 shirts six months ago, MGA, but they did not give me the shirts because that technology is a secret.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Is item 43 open for public comment?
Item 43 is not open for public comment, but you can speak to it during general if you'd like.
Yes.
Are there any other items?
No.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Daisy Zhang. My partner and I are the named buyers in the motion in regards to item 43. I just want to make it clear to the council member, to the council, that we already own a 50% interest in this property and it is a private property that is the driveway easement to the adjacent property where we already own. We are requesting to buy this from the city because, at the request of DBS zoning, and it is what is required for us to obtain our building permit to build our single-family home. So we're asking the council to vote yes in support of the sale and in support of us building our family home. Thank you. And I want to thank council member Gualdo and Blumenfeld for putting forth this motion.
Good morning. Which items?
I'm going to be doing general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. My name is Karen Ramirez. I am a community organizer for the organization Sage and I'm also a resident of your council district, Mr. Marquis Harris-Dawson. I just recently bought a home there, so I really love that neighborhood. In 2022, voters just like myself and colleagues here behind me said yes to the measure ULA because we wanted to do something about the housing affordability in Los Angeles. We wanted to do something about the nearly 45 unhoused people who would be sleeping on our streets tonight. Today, ULA has raised close to $1 billion to fund construction of affordable new housing, an unprecedented amount of money for a city in the U.S. We are making incredible progress. Why? Because finally, we are amassing revenue on a scale that will actually make a difference, not just a dent. In this way, Measure ULA is transformational. We ask you to support Measure ULA and to stay with the people who voted for this measure. Thank you.
Before the next speaker begins, I would like to call up Cynthia Strathman, Kimberly Son, Dolly Slow, Trinidad Alvarez, and John Paul Lynn.
Good morning. Which items?
General comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
I don't like to put words into other people's mouths, but it seems that most of the people you see here regularly all have versions of the same issue. Elected officials are working hard to keep serious problems away from juries. In other words, you all have appointed yourselves judge and jury. It really doesn't matter if an attorney gives you an opinion that some action is legal. It matters if a criminal jury says that it's legal. And by allowing city employees to keep contentious issues out of the criminal courts, you are fostering crime. People have hammered you with reports of human trafficking, brazen violations of free speech, attacks with exotic weapons, or as with me, the police deliberately ignoring extortion. If someone has communicated with you outside of a public meeting that this legal inaction is acceptable, then that communication is illegal. You need to tell them to drop dead.
Next speaker. Good morning. Which items?
General public comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Sounds good. My name is Alfonso Directo Jr. I'm the advocacy director at ACT L.A. Good to see many of you today. I'm here to urge you to continue to support Measure ULA. Measure ULA is working as intended. The first goal of ULA is to increase access to permanently affordable housing for people in vulnerable communities, permanently removing profit incentive from housing. I'm here today to urge you to join us in advancing this decommodified mission of ULA and maximize funding for permanently affordable social housing. Over the next five years, expiring covenants threaten housing stability of 3,000 families. This is preventable with permanently affordable social housing. Join us in fighting for ULA and social housing in L.A. Thank you.
Okay, good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. I will ask that, I believe you made an accommodation request. So we don't have to have this conversation now, but we appreciate if you were consistent on that. Go ahead. Mr. Herman, your time is running.
Tan malo como dicen por ahí. Ay, 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 no soy un tonto, pendejo abogado de Los Angeles. No, no seas tan malo, puto.
Don't be so bad. I'm not that stupid, dumbass attorney.
Okay, so this is... Let the interpreter finish. I apologize. Go ahead.
25-0900.
You need to, this is your only warning. I need you to stick to the agenda items. You know the rules. If you don't, then remove your general public comment. Go ahead. Your time was paused.
25-0900 S20 and CD11, fuck it for the record. Item number two, CD9, Criminal Current Price, Thursday Court. Fuck item number two, 150160 S73. Item three, 150160 S936, fuck CD10. Number four, 160160 S394, CD15, stupid motherfucker, fuck that item two. Item number five, CD11, Hearing Protest of Appeals for Objection of the Building and Safety, fuck item CD11 and five, 250160 S126. Nine fucking appeals here, fuck all nine and fuck you. Now, and my other items on this fucking agenda is about item 68. Is that on the agenda, asshole? Thank you for nodding. Now I got your attention. Tan malo y las malas de Padilla y la otra gorda Mu Mu Mu, Smokin' Scan, is that numero 251434. Es imposible para estos cabrones jodidos que roban tanto pinche dinero a ustedes, la gente atrás que a mí.
So they're so bad. You have Padilla and Mu Mu Hernandez and Smokin' Scan for council 525-1434 and it's impossible for these fucking assholes to let money be stolen from the people behind me.
Y numero 60, cabrón, en CD6 del Paldea, la pinche puta. Es lo que ellos están diciendo que nosotros trae un amor. En inglés, la palabra es C-A-R-E. Care for this, motherfuckers, Smokin' Scan. Now into my general fucking public comment.
All right, you have one minute for general. Go ahead.
Goddamn right, motherfucker. Under CF-1208, CF1208 S1, 1600 S Flower and Hope. Fucking South Park Tower Project, fuck you, Gualdo. Fix the fucking problem there, you goddamn bitches. That's for item number 38 and 39 for the record. And I'm asking you to appeal and sustain this fucking action by that chongo up there. You chongo with your lights on. Swing on this. Smokin' Scan, Smokin' Scan. And in my closing rebuttal with this fucked up city with the fucked up plan and a fucked up reason for the fucked up excuses, give these motherfuckers a chance to survive with 45 fucking dollars an hour. Fuck the airport, fuck, fuck Gavin Newsom, and fuck you, Mr. Attorney, for interrupting me. Pinching sangron, puto madre, way.
And your time has expired. Next speaker. Good morning. If you need to shake it off, it's okay. It's a lot to follow up on, but...
It's a hard act to follow.
It's a very hard act to follow, but we appreciate you trying. Which items would you like to speak to?
I'm sorry, I'm here for general public comment.
Okay, no worries. You have one minute. Go ahead.
My name's Cynthia Strathman. I'm the executive director of the community group Sage. I'm here with the other sahistas and our allies to express our support for Measure ULA and to celebrate its accomplishments as it nears the 3 billion mark, or the 1 billion, three-year mark and $1 billion. Measure ULA has made some huge inroads into some of the structural challenges that we face in our housing sector and it is allowing projects that are underway to meet funding gaps and new projects to get underway that are going to provide housing for our residents who are at least able to afford it. It is also a model for progressive wealth taxing from around the country, one of the few progressive models of such taxes today. And as such, I hope that you will join the hundreds of thousands of people who voted for it in supporting it and celebrating it. There's almost 60 folks here from Sage today. We're not all speaking. Merry Christmas, but we're here to support.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Before the next speaker begins, I would like to call up Nick Stewart Block, Anai Gonzalez, and Jason Enright.
Good morning. Which items? Good morning. Which items?
Yes, I would like to make a general public comment on behalf of Betzedic regarding the proposed consolidation. Hi, my name is John Paul Lynn. I'm a staff attorney with Betzedic Small Business Development Program. We provide legal assistance to hundreds of low-to-moderate-income small business owners every year at zero cost to them. We are one of only two such programs in L.A. and EWDD is our main funding source. So the proposed consolidation into CIFD will disrupt the provision of these essential services. EWDD has been a vital partner to Betzedic during a time when so much is at stake, particularly with the wildfires at the beginning of this year. And I've personally seen the federal tariffs and ICE raids decimate the ability of our small businesses to operate profitably or even stay in business. Looking forward to the 2026 World Cup and 2028 Olympics, it is essential that we preserve experienced leadership and dedicated economic expertise within city government. This consolidation would set us apart in the wrong way from other major cities. My final point is that business services are not social services, so please keep EWDD independent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Good morning. Which items?
General public speaking.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Okay. My name is Kimberly Son and I'm a member of Poder Comunitario Collective. I'm here respectfully but firmly asking you to protect ULA. ULA has prevented evictions and has protected thousands of tenants by providing access to free attorneys. Thanks to ULA, many families have been able to stay in their homes and have a real chance at stability and dignity. ULA has a clear purpose, to ensure that communities can have a fairer and more just vision of housing. That is why we are asking you to protect it. ULA is a democratic vote, a measure that passed because the people demanded it and because communities need it. You cannot take away what the community won at the ballot box. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Buenos dias, en qué puntos quisiera comentar?
Mi nombre es Trinidad y vengo de Colectivo Poder Comunitario y estoy aquí para decirles que ULA ha protegido a los inquilinos. Danos acceso a abogados gratuitos.
Señor Trinidad, un momento. Hi, my name is Trinidad. I'm from Community Power Collective and I'm here to comment on Measure ULA. Adelante.
Danos acceso a abogados gratuitos cuando enfrentamos órdenes de desalojo.
And through Measure ULA, we have been able to have access to free attorneys to be able to help us with our evictions.
Ahora quieren quitarnos, quitándonos argumentando que afecta a la ciudad, pero sabemos que quienes impulsan esas ideas son los ricos a quienes...
Now, you want to take that away from us under the argument of it having an effect on the city, but we know who's behind this, that's pushing this agenda. It's the rich people. Adelante.
Esas ideas son los ricos a quienes, a quienes nos, no les importa nuestra comunidad.
And these are the ideas of the rich who don't care at all about the community.
Nosotros como comunidad hemos visto con nuestros propios ojos que gracias a ULA podemos tener...
We as a community have witnessed firsthand the benefits of Measure ULA.
Representación legal y una posibilidad real de mantener nuestra vivienda. Por eso pedimos con firmeza que ULA sea protegida.
And through Measure ULA, we have witnessed people get access to legal representation and the real possibility or opportunity to be able to keep their homes. So we ask you firmly to please protect Measure ULA.
Thank you. Next speaker. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Thank you. My name is Anai. I'm a constituent of District 10 and I work alongside Sage. Measure ULA is doing exactly what the majority of Los Angeles voters knew it would do when they approved it, which is fund bold, comprehensive, and permanent solutions to our housing crisis. ULA is now an integral part of the city's budget and programs and it is far and away the most powerful tool we have to increase housing affordability and reduce homelessness. Just weeks ago, the Los Angeles Housing Department approved a $425 million spending program to build affordable housing. That's more than five times what they typically allocate in a single year. This is a groundbreaking achievement and it is all thanks to Measure ULA. We should celebrate ULA and the positive difference it is making for families all over L.A. who are rent burdened and desperately need affordable housing options. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items?
General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Hi, council members. My name is Nick and I'm here with Lane to voice our support for ULA, a transformational policy that is already making a difference in the lives of Angelenos. This measure was passed with a strong mandate from voters to address a longstanding housing crisis. Funds have already helped tens of thousands of renters stay housed, while just a few weeks ago, LAHD approved $425 million for affordable housing, a groundbreaking achievement made possible by ULA. We are also here today to urge council to stand with tourism workers against outrageous pressure tactics to weaken wages and health care. For council to capitulate not only hurts workers now but sets a dangerous precedent for our legislative process and any gains for working families. We urge you to keep ULA strong, to stand with tourism workers, and to continue building a Los Angeles that prioritizes people over profit. Thank you.
Before the next speaker begins, I would like to call up Blair Bestin, Kimberly Son, Anna Hunman, Manuel Mireles, and Julia Yadegar.
Good morning. Which items?
General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jason Enright.
Hi, my name is Jason Enright. I'm a member of the North Hollywood Northeast Neighborhood Council, and I'm a member of LA Forward. You know, I've noticed a disturbing trend. The people will fight really hard to win something. You know, we fought for Larso. We get in front of this council, and then you all weaken it. You know, we fight for the Olympic wage, and Marquise now wants to weaken it. You know, we fought for Measure ULA. I wear out two pairs of shoes canvassing for Measure ULA, and now this council wants to weaken it. You know, when are you going to start listening to the people? You know, the people want affordable housing. The people want good wages. The people want low rents. And y'all seem more interested in listening to millionaires and billionaires than working with us. All these people took off work, came down here, took the subway, so that they could come down here and ask you to, you know, protect these things. Really need to listen. Thanks.
Good morning. Which items?
I'll be speaking on general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Great. So my name is Manny Morelos, and I am a community organizer at Sage and part of the State House L.A. team. I also live in CD-14, Isabel Jurado's district. So I'm here in support of Measure ULA. Measure, over the past two years, Measure ULA has helped tens of thousands of renters at risk of eviction and homelessness. ULA has enabled the city to provide emergency rental assistance to families still suffering from income loss due to the pandemic and, more recently, federal immigration raids. ULA has enabled the city to provide legal assistance to households being harassed by or unlawfully evicted by their landlords. And ULA has ensured our seniors, the fastest-growing population of unhoused peoples, can afford to stay in their home by funding rental aid. This is exactly what we, the voters, wanted when we said yes to L.A. Housing, care, and stability for working-class households struggling with rising rents and the cost of living in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Good morning, council members. Blair Bestin, Executive Director of the Historic Core Business Improvement District. And I wanted to speak on the dissolving of the EWDD into the CIFD, and it's disturbing. It's a red flag to us about how our city is prioritizing our businesses. I hope you can appreciate what we've been through, what they've been through with raids, COVID riots. Twenty-three businesses in June were decimated and hundreds of thousands of dollars in losses. We need to think about a department and a focus on this and prioritize our businesses in some kind of structure. We'd love to be a part of the conversation about it, and it's just disturbing that this is just sort of happening behind the scenes and we haven't really had a discussion. So thank you. Which items would you like to speak to?
En que punto?
Sí. Comentario público general.
General public comment.
Mi nombre es Sofía Mendoza. Soy miembro de ACE.
Hi, my name is Sofía Mendoza. I'm an ACE member.
Estoy aquí para apoyar y defender la medida ULA.
I'm here to support and defend Measure ULA.
La ULA ha alcanzado ahora su primer mil millones de dólares en ingresos.
Measure ULA has made its first million, or I'm sorry, billion dollars in income.
Pero hoy ULA está bajo ataque coordinado por la Asociación contra los impuestos.
But today, ULA is under a coordinated attack through the tax organization.
Es importante mantener esto porque a mí me ha ayudado, sí? Yo he sido dos veces demandada por desalojo y esto me ha ayudado a mí. O sea, que nos beneficia a nosotros los inquilinos.
And it's very important for us to keep this measure because it has personally helped me as I have faced two separate evictions. So I personally have benefited from it as a tenant.
Estoy aquí para demandar que no toquen ULA y también representen el pago de los juegos olímpicos y los trabajadores merecen los treinta dólares la hora ahora mismo.
And so I'm here to demand for you to not touch Measure ULA, and I'm also here to represent the need for us to have Olympic wages. People need their thirty dollars an hour now.
Nosotros como organizaciones nos unimos y ganamos esto, sí? Para las personas de hotel. Entonces, es importante que respeten esto. No se los estén demorando a ellos. Gracias.
So as an organization, we came together and we won this for hotel workers. And so we're here to say you need to respect that and to no longer delay it.
Before the next speaker begins, I would like to call up Smoke and Scan, Kyle Nelson, Jovan Houston, Audit L.A., Luisa Galindo, and Fabia Salazar.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning, honorable council members. General public comment. My name is Anna Hoffman, and I'm a power community, power. And I'm a renter in Boyle Heights, living under a lot of harassment. I dream of affordable housing where I don't have to have an abusive and hateful landlord. That's why I'm here to talk about the importance of the ULA law. It was voted on by the people of Los Angeles who demand the program to benefit renters. We need to protect and keep ULA funds, which belongs to us, to save and create affordable and social housing. Please don't give the power to the developers and don't change the ULA. We need, but thank you so much.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
Comentario público general.
General public. Un minuto.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Tomasa Martinez.
Good morning. My name is Tomasa Martinez.
Soy miembro de ACE. Vivo en el distrito catorce. Estoy aquí para apoyar y defender la medida ULA.
Yes, I am a member of ACE, living in District Fourteen, and I'm here to support Measure for ULA.
ULA está alcanzando ahora sus primeros mil millones de dólares en ingresos que son del pueblo.
And the ULA is now reaching its first billion dollars in income, which comes from the people.
Pero ahora ULA está bajo ataque coordinado por Asociación contra impuestos.
But now ULA is under attack by associations of taxes, of tax income.
Esta mañana me llamó mi amiga diciéndome que estaba yendo muy mal. Le quitaron su carro, y para completar el paquete tiene miedo que la saquen de su departamento.
This morning, my friend was attacked. She is scared that she is facing eviction, and they also took her car.
Ella vive en el distrito uno.
She lives in the first district.
Debido a que no ha salido a trabajar por los escuestros de estos sicarios del hielo...
Because she was not able to go to work because of the taxes.
Estoy aquí para demandar que no toquen ULA, ya que eso le ayudaría a ella a protegerse de un desalojo y que también respeten el pago de los juegos olímpicos. Los trabajadores merecen eso y más. Gracias.
I am here to ask that you please support ULA so that she may continue to be able to protect herself from harassment of the landlords. I am also asking you to support the Olympic wage so that we can protect our workers as well.
Go ahead. Try it now. Can we make sure the wireless microphone is live now? Give us a test.
Testing, testing.
Okay, we're all good. So I assume all items and general public comment?
You know me so well.
So just for everybody, because it's been a minute, the items that are open for public comment are items one through nine, items eleven through nineteen, twenty-two, and sixty through seventy-four. So you have three minutes for those items and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Thank you. I want to start with señor Lee, le debe una disculpa a la señora Audit L.A.
I'm sorry, Mr. City Attorney. The interpreter headset is having some issues. Could I ask the speaker to repeat?
Sure. Can you please repeat that?
Yeah, but you took some of my time away. You had to give me back. Okay, señor Lee, le debe una disculpa a la señora Audit L.A.
Mr. Lee, you owe an apology to the lady, miss Audit L.A.
Thank you. Okay, that's on topic. I'm sorry. I don't care what you say, Mr. Attorney. It's on topic.
I'm gonna, can you hold your time?
But we will move on, okay?
Thank you.
For the street vacations, big no, I don't want any street vacations because then it just gives Scientology the hope that you're going to come and give them their compound that they want. Okay, that's why I don't want any street vacations in number sixty and sixty-one. It's there, Mr. City Attorney. We just don't want them having more power than they already have. Which brings me to the New Year's Eve event. And, you know, happy, you know, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year's, Happy Hanukkah, Happy every holiday to all of you and Smoke and Scan family. But I don't, I want you to make sure with whoever's doing the New Year's Eve event that it's not Scientology-related, and I say it because of this. It turns out that Scientology actually controls the Christmas parade in Hollywood. It's absolutely, it's undeniable. And Mr. Hugo, it's probably why he is like under a pressure cooker, why he can't help us out at all. But he has to help us because it's not right. You don't want people who do human trafficking and all these things and slave labor. So everyone working, okay, Scientology on the parade makes slave labor forty-seven dollars a week for a hundred and ten hours. I'm talking about the New Year's Eve event. I don't want this happening to the New Year's event.
Hold on, pause your time. I gave you wide latitude. You're talking about the Christmas parade, and the item is not about the Christmas parade.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to make a comparison.
I understand. I waited for you to connect it. So you got about fifteen seconds left on this item at seventy-three. It is related to the New Year's Eve right-of-entry permit. So please stick to that for the next fifteen seconds. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I don't want the New Year's Eve event to have the same thing where it turns out next year we find out that it was all slave labor, forty-seven dollars a week, C-York members doing it. And if you guys aren't, you're going to get sued. The city's going to be liable. There's not allowed to have slave labor running our parades.
Please move on to the next item. You can continue to ring generally if you'd like, but please move on to another item. Go ahead.
Okay, okay, Mr. Hugo. And the other one is for the art, right? We're gonna, we want to do art murals. It's somewhere between sixty and seventy, whatever. It's in there, about doing art, the arts, whatever. Okay, I'm all for doing more murals and art, okay? But, and it's for our immigrant community, right? Talking and doing pictures on the immigrant community. Well, I say yes, but I want a caveat. I want to be able to do one mural myself where I am warning the immigrant community not to get sucked up by Scientology with the promise of a R1 visa because they will then hold that visa, and if you ever want to escape, and you likely will, you will not be able to. So yes to the art, but with that caveat, I want the community warned, okay, Mr. Hugo? And Mr. Hugo should be listening. It's his, he's the one with all the Scientology buildings in his area, and he does nothing about it. I mean, at least Mr. McCosker pretends he's listening. And you know what? And he got, and Ms. Hernandez, you got off track. He was talking to you. Thankfully, not during when I'm talking, because, you know, I'd be heartbroken. But anyway, so I'll just let it run down. Shout out to Smoke and Scan.
General public comment. You have one minute.
Okay. I want to talk about the shrine event. Now, this is Mr. Curran Price's area. They, the city granted Scientology the permit to go to the shrine for their, whatever event it is, their New Year's event filming, okay? And Mr. Curran Price, you know, I've come here long enough, enough of us have come here, you know it's a cult. You know they violate all of our constitutional rights by closing the sidewalks illegally. And then Laura F. M., who's a sweet, lovely, you know, woman, comes here and tells how she was born and raised in this cult, okay? And that they withheld her, the LAPD and, you know, no offense to these guys here, but they withheld her from being able to go on the sidewalk that she's legally able to go on to say hi to her father, who she hasn't seen in five years, because she's being held, basically, in my opinion, captive by Scientology. So Mr. Curran Price, can you please do your duty and not allow this? Tell them to revoke it, okay? And like I said, I wish Smoke and Scan family and everyone here a wonderful holiday season. Not sure if I'll be here Friday. Thank you for kind of listening, some of you kind of listening for the past year. I appreciate it.
Before the next speaker, I would like to call up Ella, Jaclyn Inegus, Irma, Fabian, Persiveranda Martinez, and Godri Plata.
Good morning. Which items?
General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jovan Houston, airport worker. Yes, this is my third day being here this week. Just want to let the city council president know how of a gut punch he hit us as workers for supporting him. It's a shame. It really is a shame. Please, I know you see this room filled with people today here wanting a change. They want affordable housing. They want livable wages. They want healthcare. The city of Los Angeles is filled with money. Please give these workers and these people in this city what they need. Don't be the Grinch of Christmas this year. Don't take what we fought hard, so very hard, to win. Council president, we deserve this. And yes, I will be here. I work two o'clock in the morning, but yes, I'm still here this morning.
Good morning. Which items?
Muy buenas. Dios los bendiga a cada uno. No he visto que alguien salude, pero bueno, saludo yo. Mi nombre es Fabia Salazar. Vengo a hacer comentario general.
Yes, good morning. God bless all of you guys. I say hi to you. I saw that you are not saying hi, but it's okay. My name is Fabiana Salazar, public comment. I'm here to ask that the case of ULA be respected. That's it.
Vengo a pedir que de favor el pedido de ULA y las necesidades de nuestra comunidad, de las personas que estamos en la calle, en el bus, o que pagamos renta. Realmente somos los que sentimos la necesidad, no los que andan en carros de lujo, los millonarios. Ellos nos sienten la necesidad como nosotros el pueblo, la verdad, los que andamos ahí en condiciones difíciles.
Yes, I'm here asking for ULA. The members of our community are the ones who need it, the people on the street, the people who ride the buses, the people who pay the rent, not those who are driving luxury cars, the millionaires. It's us who are facing difficult situations that need it.
Pido que de favor lo que todo estamos pidiendo aquí, el grupo OSAJ, de favor sea escuchado. No nos hagamos los olvidados porque eso sería muy triste que realmente no consideren la necesidad del pueblo que anda en la calle. Muchas gracias.
Please, it is all of us who are asking for this. Do not let us be forgotten because this is out of necessity for the people who are under risk of being on the street and for the people who are on the street.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Sí, buenos días. Mi nombre es Dominga Solorsano y soy miembro de ACE. Estoy aquí para apoyar y defender la medida ULA. Está alcanzando ahora su primer mil millones de dólares en ingresos.
Yes, my name is Dominga Solorsano. I am a member of ACE. I'm here to support ULA as it is right now reaching its first one-billion-dollar in income revenue.
Pero hoy ULA está bajo ataque coordinado por la Asociación contra impuestos.
But right now, ULA is under attack, under a coordinated attack for an association of taxes.
Estoy aquí para demandar que no toquen a ULA y que también respeten el pago de los juegos... y que también respeten el pago de los juegos olímpicos. Los trabajadores merecen los treinta dólares a la hora, ahora mismo.
I'm here asking for ULA not to be touched at all. And I'm also asking for the Olympic wage to be respected as well for the workers who really need it because they deserve thirty dollars an hour.
Y por favor, se les pide que no olviden esta ayuda de ULA porque somos personas trabajadoras de bajos recursos, pagamos impuestos, y por favor que no nos olviden porque ya no queremos más gentes en la calle que nosotros lo estamos viendo con nuestros propios ojos. Gracias.
And please do not forget us, the workers of, please do not forget about ULA. We need this help. We are the workers, we are the people with low income and low resources. We are the ones who pay taxes. And please do not forget about us because we will end up on the street and we do not want to see more people ending up without a house.
Good morning, which items?
Buenos días, comentario general. Mi nombre es Irma Fabian y vengo del Distrito Uno, miembro de SAGE y de la Colectiva de Transformación Comunitaria de Metro.
Yes, my name is Eva Fabian. I, Irma Fabian, and I am a member, I live in District One. I am a member of ACE and I am a member from the Metro Transfer Organization.
La medida ULA pasó en el 2022 por la votación de los angelinos.
Measure ULA passed in 2022 as voted by Angelinos.
Esta medida debe mantenerse por ser un medio importante que nos ha ayudado a la mayoría de las personas evitando desalojos.
This measure should maintain, should stay as is because it has been an important way for us, the members of the community, to avoid evictions.
Manteniendo las viviendas accesibles el derecho al abogado.
Maintaining accessible housing as well as legal representation.
Tomar decisiones contra esta medida es violentar la dignidad de los votantes.
And taking decisions against this measure is to violate the dignity of the voters.
Y el respeto a la democracia por el voto.
And respect of democracy by the vote.
Queremos que protejan totalmente y mantenerla para que se siga usando, para que las familias estemos unidas.
We want you to protect it so that it can continue to be used so that the families may maintain themselves together.
En viviendas seguras.
In secure housing situations.
ULA es una medida esencial que está ayudando para financiar viviendas y construirlas.
ULA is essential to help finance housing and to be able to build new housing.
ULA es un modelo para la nación por lograr los cambios que se están haciendo a pesar de la política purguesista que vivimos.
And ULA is a model for the new changes that need to happen despite the racism that we are living.
Gracias.
Thank you.
General comment?
Thank you, you have one minute, go ahead.
Thank you. Godfrey Plata, Deputy Director at L.A. Forward Institute. Here urging council to visit my favorite part of LHD's website, the ULA Revenue Dashboard. At housing.lacity.gov/ula-dash-dashboard, click on ULA Revenue. The ULA Revenue Dashboard tracks the monthly revenue generated by Measure ULA, and we hope you build it into your staff briefings. On the dashboard, you'll see that as of last month, revenue from ULA totaled nine hundred ninety-one million dollars. It's bringing in an average of thirty-one million dollars a month to the city, sometimes much more than that. Which means this month we are celebrating ULA's billion-dollar revenue birthday. And over half of all those funds are thanks to ULA's revenue from multifamily and commercial housing. On the dashboard, you can disaggregate revenue by council districts. So I'd love to honor the top three contributing districts, CD-11, CD-5, and CD-4. Thank you so much. Your top three districts have contributed six hundred thirteen million dollars as of last month, contributing almost two-thirds of funding to the entire city's funding for affordable housing and homelessness prevention.
Good morning, which items?
Buenos días, mi nombre es Esmeralda Nengrete. Soy miembro de CPC y voy a hablar sobre comentario general.
Hi, my name is Esmeralda. I'm here to give public comment.
Estoy aquí para pedirles con urgencia que protejan a ULA.
I'm here to ask you urgently to protect Measure ULA.
ULA es fundamental para nuestras comunidades. No solo es una medida necesaria, sino también un voto ganado democráticamente.
Not only is it fundamental to the community as a need, but it's also something that we voted on as a people in a democratic vote.
Por el cual luchamos para que pudieran existir y mantenerse vigente.
And we have fought for it to come into existence and for it to stay in effect.
Hoy está siendo atacada por ricos y por los corporativos millonarios que no quieren que los recursos lleguen a nuestras comunidades.
And today, it's under attack by the rich and corporate billionaires that don't want the funds to be able to be, come to the community.
Por eso es indispensable que ustedes protejen, que ustedes actúan con responsabilidad y la protejan.
And so, at this time, it is essential for you to act with, act responsibly and to protect it in order to protect the community.
No pueden permitir que se violen nuestra voluntad ni que se elimine una medida que nuestra comunidad ganó con su esfuerzo.
And it, you can't allow for them to violate our will and what the community has asked for.
Nuestro voto debe respetarse, debe contar. Y ULA es una herramienta esencial para la estabilidad y el bienestar de nuestras comunidades.
Our vote should be respected and it should count. And it is important for us to have this for the benefit and for the support and stability of the community.
Les pedimos que mantengan y protejan a ULA. Gracias.
We ask that you keep and protect Measure ULA. Thank you.
Before the next speaker begins, I would like to call up Eliza Santos, Stacy Seguera Bullinger, Maria Ceja, Myra Pum, and Dennis Madison.
Good morning, which items? Go ahead.
Mi nombre es Perseveranda Martinez y vengo...
Can we, hold on, before we start our time?
Un momento, señora.
Can we?
Señora Persevera, un momento.
Okay, can you pull the microphone a little bit closer so we can hear you?
Voy a acercarse un poco más al micrófono, así se puede escuchar mejor.
Thank you, we want to make sure we can hear what you're saying. Go ahead.
Adelante, ¿pueden empezar desde cero, desde el principio? Mi nombre es Perseveranda Martinez y vengo de comunitario, de comunidad y estoy aquí para poder, favor, que, pedirles favor que protejan ULA. Ustedes... Un momento, un momento. Para ahí y voy a interpretar y luego puede continuar. Gracias. Sorry, sorry.
Hi, my name is Perseveranda Martinez. I'm here from Community Power Collective. And I'm here to ask for you to protect ULA. Adelante.
Concejales tienen la responsabilidad de proteger a nuestra comunidad y una de las maneras, sorry, manera, ma, nueva comunidad. Un y una de las maneras más importantes de hacer es defender a ULA.
Council, you have the responsibility to protect our community. And one of the most important ways for you to do that is to protect ULA.
ULA ha traído y...
Thank you, next speaker? Good morning, which items?
Buenos días, mi nombre es Eloisa Galindo. Quiero hablar en comentario público, por favor.
Hi, good morning, my name is Eloisa Galindo and I'm here to give a general public comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
Un minuto adelante. Hoy estoy aquí para pedirles que, a todos ustedes, que protejan a ULA.
I'm here to ask all of you to please protect Measure ULA.
Que protejan el voto del público. El público, el pueblo lo decidió en el año veintidós.
Please protect the people's vote. The people voted for this in 2022.
Karen Bass y ustedes como concejales tienen el derecho y el deber de proteger lo que el pueblo eligió, ULA.
Karen Bass and you as a council have the right and the duty to protect the people's vote, which was for Measure ULA.
Siempre en una parte está el pueblo que hace grande California y en el otro lado están los poderosos, los políticos, y el uno por ciento de los millonarios.
We have one side, which is the people, the community. And then on the other side, we have the powerful, the politicians, and the one percent, the billionaires.
La asociación contrainpuestos y la presión de los desarrolladores están hablando para querer derrotar a ULA.
And we have the anti-tax association that wants to take down and destroy ULA.
Al uno por ciento de los millonarios no les debemos permitir hacer esto con ULA.
And the one percent, those billionaires that are doing this, we shouldn't allow them to be able to take down Measure ULA.
Al contrario, el uno por ciento debería pagar los impuestos y habría mejor educación pública, viviendas accesibles, salud, acceso a la salud, y un pago justo para los trabajadores.
In fact, it should be the opposite. That same one percent should be paying their taxes so that we can have better public education, more affordable housing, and fair wages for workers.
Good morning, which items?
All items and general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Public, when you hear, when you hire clowns, you get a circus. Item number two through fifteen are for abatement liens by these criminals of the incompetent sleazy council of corruption to place massive liens on citizens' properties instead of assisting the public. This clown council is going to vote to give Dimwit, Nisky, and Ramon, and Poverty Pimp Heather Hutt, and the LAPD another twenty-five thousand dollars for security at an upcoming party in item sixty-seven. But they can't find a way to assist these citizens versus placing liens on their properties. Thanks Dimwit Ramon, thanks Poverty Pimp Hutt. Instead, these clowns are going to vote on items two through to line the pockets of the indicted out on bail and on trial for polygamy and twenty-one counts of extortion, Curran Price, and criminally insane sleazy Marqueez Dawson via abatement contracts, demanding an investigation of Dawson. Curran Price and Poverty Pimp Heather Hutt, all these items against the public should receive a no vote. I demand an investigation of these funds. Items sixteen to twenty-one are for abatement liens by these criminals of the incompetent sleazy council of corruption to place massive liens on citizens' properties instead of assisting the public. In my opinion, wording should be added to these items that will use the lien funds extorted from the public by Curran Price and Dawson to finance an investigative report on how much increased commerce, increased job opportunities, how much increase in public services these incompetent council circus clowns are bringing into each district of the city. Unfortunately, the answer will be zero and thus our raging homelessness costing us hundreds of billions of dollars in human lives. In my opinion, these funds should have special, have special Curran Price and Dawson audit provisions that will prevent the twenty-one count indicted out on bail and on trial for polygamy and government funds extortion via voting on his wife's city business contracts. Cannot embezzle the funds. I demand that Sleazy D stop his thought-police-free-speech-violating crimes against the people. Item seventy-four by McCosker is yet another upcoming multimillion-dollar lawsuit payout by our incompetent government. What else are you going to do for the people, McCosker? How much commerce is this suit going to increase in the district? Answer, none. Item seventy-four lawsuits and Dimwit Ramon's twenty-five thousand to the LAPD is how these incompetent corrupt clowns are addressing the seventy-thousand-dollar homelessness epidemic emergency, the two-hundred-seventy-five-billion-dollar fire damage emergency, all of which are incompetent and corrupt government created. General public comment. Public, when you hire clowns, you get a circus. Last week, Hernandez and Soda Martinez were chessing on Channel Thirty-Five, cheesing on Channel Thirty-Five, standing on the street corner, giving away bags of food, talking about giving to the community. Someone, please tell these two that giving away bags of food while not a criminal act like Dawson, Price, and Poverty Pimp Hutt, this is not their job. The Chinese counterparts of the sleazy council and county boards are promoted based on how much of an increase in commerce and thereby increase in jobs and increase in overall community well-being they bring to their community improvement, increase in commerce people. The problem is that none of these incompetent council people know how to increase commerce. They only know standing on street corners, liquor licenses, placing liens on the public, and straight up Curran Price, Marqueez Dawson, Poverty Pimp Hutt, incompetence, and corruption while collecting their over twenty-thousand dollars per month salaries. Public, we need a new system.
Good morning, which items?
Good morning, Groot. I'll take all items and general public comment, please.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'll start with item sixty-five. This is regarding a public servants, a public service announcement, artwork, and content for citywide display to initiate a quote-unquote "know your rights" PSA on sidewalk and transit amenities program. I think a frustrating aspect about ICE occupying L.A. is that most of what the city, what these offices and what the mayor wants to do is remind people what their rights are. Most, most of us know our rights, most immigrants know their rights. The issue is that their rights are being trampled on and the LAPD is helping ICE do it. And the LAPD, rather than protecting immigrants from these kidnappings, which are illegal, they're brutalizing protesters who want to stand up to them. So rather than reminding us what our rights are and spending resources reminding us what our rights are, do something to actually protect those rights. We also have motions on this agenda for private security for Runyon Canyon. So when council member Ramon ran on a platform of defunding the police, I guess she meant defund the police and give that money to private security. Then, again, we have Care+ sweeps on the agenda, which are pretty abysmal euphemisms because there's nothing caring about these sweeps. And if you ran on a platform of ending sweeps like Mr. Soda Martinez did, like Ms. Hernandez and Ms. Herato did, who are right now engaging in a side conversation with Heather, which is really disrespectful. It would be great if you'd pay attention. Thank you, Hugo, for paying attention. If you want to live up to the things you ran on, you could vote against these Care+ sweeps because they are throwing away people's belongings. They're not actually offering services. People have really important items like important documents, prescription medications, cherished possessions that are irreplaceable thrown away. And then there are oftentimes not even promised services. And just this past week, I believe, in Isabel Herato's district, there was a sweep. Community members like from L.A. Can were asking to speak with her. And Isabel, you showed up in a police escort and didn't get out of the car, didn't address anyone in the community, while L.A. San and the LAPD were throwing away people's belongings. Now, I appreciate that you beat Kevin DeLeón in his election because he was awful and I supported you to that end, but you really haven't been living up to your campaign promises to actually work for the people because you're letting these sweeps happen and you're not standing up to your council president when he does egregious things like cut off public comment when there's so many people here. And I know we're going to be the last ones to have a chance to speak.
General public comment?
Measure ULA, a vital funding source, is now under attack from developers and landlords and the Olympic wage. Fought hard for and won. Marqueez wants to roll it back before increases have begun. What the fuck? This shit sucks. This council is weak. Could you at least listen to the people when we speak? Now is not the time to chit-chat with your friends. Can you pay attention until public comment ends? Council soon will go on a long recess.
to take all this time to enjoy the holidays on the taxpayers' dime? Oh, does it take a state mandate to get remote comment? Why does this whole body treat the people with contempt? And what about the censorship that violates our rights? You haven't seen the end of it. We're still in this fight. Before the last few people in this row speak, I would like to just encourage all of you to stand up to your president when he does shitty things. Shout out Smoke &amp; Scan.
Good morning. Which items?
Voy a hacer un comentario público general.
I'll be giving a general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Un minuto adelante. Hola, mi nombre es Myra. Actualmente resido en Los Ángeles. El incremento de vivienda en lo personal a mi familia nos ha afectado.
Hi, my name is Myra, and I reside in Los Angeles, and I have been personally affected by the rent increases.
Es difícil pagar el aumento de renta.
It is really hard to pay this rent increase.
La ULA enfrenta una presión coordinada por parte de grupos antiimpuestos de lobby inmobiliario.
Measure ULA is facing a coordinated and strategic attack by lobbyists that are against, or developing lobbyists.
Desde intentos de derogación a nivel estatal hasta exigencias de desarrolladores que buscan excepciones.
And there have been attacks even at the state level for developers who are looking to find exceptions to the rule.
Debemos detener esto. La ULA está haciendo lo que los votantes pidieron.
We have to stop this. Measure ULA is doing exactly what the people have voted for.
Y no podemos permitir que la presión del sector inmobiliario le debilite ni desvirtúe su propósito.
And we cannot allow for the real estate industry's pressure to weaken what we have done through this measure.
Los fondos de la ULA son esenciales para mantener a las personas en sus hogares mediante la prevención de desalojos.
ULA funds are essential to keep people in their homes through preventing evictions.
La creación de viviendas permanentes y ejecuibles y la estabilidad a largo plazo.
And then this is also through the creation of permanent affordable housing, which promotes housing stability within the community.
Thank you, next speaker. Your time has expired.
No debemos dejar que nadie nos empuje a desviar este dinero hacia soluciones temporales.
Señora comentarista, ya se le acabó su tiempo. Tenemos que seguir a la misma, siguiente persona.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Which items?
I'm speaking on item number 62.
So you have one minute for the item. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Dennis Madison, Senior Vice President of Architecture and Engineering at Forest Lawn. Very happy to be here today, asking for your support of the recycled water agreement between DWP and Forest Lawn. Forest Lawn is proud to be one of the city's earliest recycled water users, irrigating the landscape of our Hollywood Hills Cemetery now for over 33 years with recycled water. With the agreement before you today, we look forward to continuing to work with DWP on water reuse for another 35 years. Forest Lawn would like to thank the DWP Commission for its support and DWP staff for their dedication in completing this agreement, and we respectfully request your approval. Thank you.
Council President, that's all the speakers for the allotted time.
All right. Thank you so much, everybody that came to share with us today. We had 75 speakers on the queue. I think we got to in excess of 50 of them. So thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, let's begin to run through our items.
Yes, sir. There is a request to continue items six and 19 to January 14, 2026, sir.
Without objection, that'll be the order.
Item 48 was called special for Mr. Price. Mr. Price requested recusal for that one.
All right. We'll give Councilmember Price the opportunity to recuse at this time for item number 48. All right, Mr. Price is recused on item number 48. Let's open the roll on that item. Is there discussion on this item?
No, sir.
48. All right, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, what's next?
Item 51, Mr. Price is also recused, but this item 51 was called special by Councilmember Rodriguez for a separate vote.
All right. Any comments on this item? All right, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 2 noes.
All right, what's next? Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes. Item 41 needed to be referred to Plum. That was an instruction that I neglected to when we continued.
For the record, then, should 41 as well as 58 be reconsidered?
Oh.
Did we already vote on those items?
Yes.
Yes. So it is best to formally vote to reconsider 41 and 58.
All right, let's open the roll on reconsideration of 41 and 58. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right.
So for 41, it is referred to Plum Committee?
All right, without objection.
And 58, there is an amendment, Rodriguez, Blumenfield, and that amendment has been circulated and is before council and may be voted on now, 58.
All right, so 58 as amended is before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, what's next?
Next would be items one through five, seven through nine, 11 through 18, 22, 60 through 62, 64, 66 through 68, and finally 70 through 73, sir.
All right, Councilmember Ramen, I have you on the queue.
Yes. On behalf of Councilmember Jaroslavsky, I was wondering whether I could move, continue item 12 to January 14.
All right. Continue item 12 to January 14. Without objection, that'll be the order.
Thank you.
So Madam Clerk, do we need to restate the items we're voting on, or does that not affect this?
It just needs to be restated, but let me just double check on February 14, 2026, sir.
Okay.
February 14, 2026 is a Saturday, so it is best to continue that item to February 17, 2026.
Is it January or February?
I'm sorry.
January 14.
January 14, 2026 is a council date.
All right, so that'll be the date.
And I think I did say January.
And just to restate, the items before council are one through five, seven through nine, 11 through, 11, I'm sorry, 13 through 18, 22, 60 through 62, 64, 66 through 68, 70 through 73.
All right, let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Mr. Blumenfield and Councilmember Jaroslavsky are both here.
So...
And they were here for this vote. Do I need to open the roll again?
Yes, it may be best, sir.
All right, let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the vote. All right, what's next?
Next is item 53, and that was called special by Councilmember Park for comments.
Councilmember Park.
Thank you, Council President and colleagues. Most of you are probably familiar with the Marvin Browdy Bike Trail. It stretches along our gorgeous coastline all the way from the South Bay up to the Pacific Palisades. And at one critical point, it swings through Marina Del Rey, right along Yvonne Burke Park, along the library. And that access point to the trail as well as to the coast and its amenities has been a really important point of access for commuters and people who use the trail for recreational purposes. Some months back, we learned of an application for an administrative exemption for their coastal permits that were submitted by a property owner seeking to close the access points to the trail by closing up a cinder block wall. Unfortunately, in their permit application, they did not describe the wall, its access point, or its intent to close that wall, and as a result, hundreds of daily commuters and other people attempting to access the bike path are now being pushed onto Lincoln Boulevard and other incredibly unsafe places where they really should not be riding bikes or using other forms of mobility that compete with some of the traffic and very serious pedestrian and bicyclist safety issues that we have. So our action today asks our planning department to revoke the administrative exemption and take the necessary steps to restore this critical piece of access to our coast and our bike path. I ask for your aye vote. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Councilmember Park. Let's open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
All right, what's next?
Next would be item number three, and that was called special, 63, excuse me, and that was called special by Councilmember Padilla.
Councilmember Padilla?
Good afternoon, colleagues. I want to express my strong support for the revised scope of the Donald C. Tillman Groundwater Replenishment Project, which represents the kind of long-term, forward-thinking investment Los Angeles needs. With this expansion, the project will increase its capacity to produce highly-treated recycled water from 25 million to 45 million gallons per day. This is a major step towards restoring and stabilizing the San Fernando Valley's groundwater basin, which, even after several years of heavy rain, still hasn't rebounded to sustainable levels. Strengthening this basin is essential for the long-term water security of our city. As a representative for District 6, I'm especially proud that this transformative work is happening in our community, in our backyard. It brings meaningful investment and creates good jobs, creates good local jobs, ensuring that our residents directly benefit from the construction and long-term operations of this facility. It reflects exactly the kind of infrastructure development that uplifts neighborhoods while building climate resilience for the entire city. I also want to highlight a component of this project that I'm particularly excited about: the creation of an interactive learning center. This space will give our community, especially children, the chance to learn from an early age what the value of water is, where it comes from, and how we can all be better environmental stewards. This hands-on educational location will inspire the next generation of scientists, engineers, and climate advocates here in the valley. And as a product of a math, science, and technology magnet school that's number one in MIT acceptances, I'm excited that this space is going to be a local location to continue to inspire more Valley youth and LA youth to choose a career in STEM. And of course, none of this would be possible without the exceptional partnership, leadership of everyone at LA San, the Bureau of Engineering, and LADWP. Can we give them a round of applause? So their collaboration, community outreach, research, and responsiveness have made this project stronger and ensured that residents were engaged and informed every step of the way. This is truly a model for how interdepartmental work should be done in Los Angeles. Overall, this is a project that is smart, equitable, and forward-looking for where our public dollars should go for the city's water's future. And I'm grateful for the leadership and dedication for all of those that were involved before me, during, and those to come. So I'm excited to see this next phase move forward and proud to support it today. Thank you. I hope we're all on aye vote.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Padilla. Let's open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
All right, what's next?
Next would be item 65, and that was called special by Councilmember Hernandez for comments.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you so much, colleagues. Colleagues, I ask for your aye vote on this motion. What we're doing is that we are moving forward a know your rights campaign for our communities, especially with all the federal immigration raids that are happening, using our bus stops so that as people are waiting for their bus, as they're waiting for public transportation, they can get access to the most up-to-date information on how to protect themselves and their loved ones and understanding their rights, both for immigrant communities but also for our non-immigrant communities, as we are seeing many of them step up and try to protect and support our immigrant families and communities. So I just ask for your aye vote on this. Thank you so much.
All right, let's open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
All right, what's next?
Next would be item 69, and that was called special by Councilmember Soto Martinez for a separate vote.
All right, let's open the roll on 69, called special by Mr. Soto Martinez for a separate vote. Let's close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, 2 noes.
All right. All right, let's go to item number 74. Councilmember Hernandez.
Can I please be recorded as a no vote on this? Thank you.
For, is that for item 69?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right. Can we go to item number 74?
Yes, sir. But let me just restate for the, for the record. So item 69, the final vote is 12 ayes and 3 noes. Next would be item 74.
All right. This was called special by Mr. Blumenfield, who's, 74? All right, city attorney's not ready, so we'll ask the city attorney to get here quickly and go to the next item.
Next would be item 52, and there are several votes for this item. The first vote that council should take is on 52D, and that is amending motion, Rodriguez-Padilla. That amending motion has been submitted and is circulated and before council now, sir.
All right, Councilmember Rodriguez for comments.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask if we would indulge a conversation about this. I know I've probably, I'm guessing my colleagues probably also have some comments, so if we can engage in a deeper conversation about what's before us, before we start taking any votes.
All right, Madam Clerk, what's the order on this? I know we are under some rules about voting on amendments in the order that they're, in the backwards order that they made, but are we allowed to discuss the larger matter? Ms. City Attorney? So in terms of discussion, the discussion can be about any of the items individually or the entire item collectively. I think the order in which we vote is something that we can clarify on as well. Got it. Okay, got it. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, I want to first begin by thanking my colleagues in Government Efficiency, Innovation, and Audits Committee for their willingness to engage in a different conversation around the future of a standalone economic development department and for advancing this discussion for full council consideration. The GEA proposal before us... The GIA proposal before us differs from the other committee reports, that it transfers, by and large, all of the functions that were previously wholly contained within Economic Workforce Development, and transfers the functions of, as we've discussed previously, youth development, aging, and the Workforce Development Division of EWDD into CIFD, leaving out the Critical Economic Development Division as a standalone department. And I think we can all agree, economic development is something that is critically important for our city and for many of our communities. And it stands apart from the functionality of many of the other components that we've been talking about as we've engaged in these broader conversations. I believe that the economic development functions don't naturally align with how we've proposed or how, what the balance of the merger has, it aligns with that reorganization. For that reason, and many other reasons, I strongly believe that an economic development department should remain as a standalone department. Many of us on this council carry a shared desire to create a bold, forward-looking vision for what this city can achieve, particularly when it comes to expanding economic opportunity and strengthening the long-term revenue for our city. Preserving a dedicated economic development department entity positions us to fully realize that potential. Colleagues, I want to acknowledge that the resulting standalone department proposed is smaller. But I also want to emphasize that this structure is not, and should not be viewed, as the final product, but more so as a starting point for this conversation. Establishing a foundation gives us a place from which we can build from, and the flexibility to grow intentionally over time. But once these functions are transferred, and we've experienced this in many other circumstances, it becomes exceedingly difficult to restore them. Now that all of these reports have been discussed in great detail in three committee meetings, I don't want to belabor the conversation, but I do want us to make sure that what we're doing, as I've said before, is measure twice and cut once. And I want to highlight some of the key points that I think are being miscommunicated in some of the reports: that the true cost of this proposal is $2.8 million. There may be some confusion from those who believe that this proposal will cost upwards of over $5 million. And this is a definite overcalculation made by the CAO's office that is based on the assumption that CIFD would need to duplicate the eleven administrative positions that a standalone department would retain. And colleagues, this is just not true. If the workload is staying with the economic development department, therein there is no need to add more positions on top of the already thirty-four administrative positions that are being transferred to CIFD through this process. Two, we still have no estimated cost of effectuating the consolidation of these departments. The CAO's report has never talked about or addressed the actual cost of what it will take to consolidate this and create this one singular department within CIFD. And by this, I mean that we don't know what the cost will be of things like merging the data systems, IT support, and the office space that is required, just to highlight a few. Three, there is an assumption that the new standalone department would be too small to function effectively. The report states that the proposed economic development department would face additional challenges because it would be considered, quote, "too small" to be able to manage it properly. However, we currently have eight departments that are smaller than what we're proposing of this economic development department today. Colleagues, if this was really about supporting or streamlining administrative functions for smaller departments, we would be having a much broader conversation than what we are having right now. This proposal actually helps CIFD in terms of right-sizing the workload. Currently, in EWDD, there is one AGM that oversees the workforce development component and one general AGM that oversees the economic development division. In CIFD's consolidation proposal, it would merge both of those portfolios under one AGM. And that is a lot of expectation for one AGM to be able to support and do that work effectively. So the way I see it, splitting economic development to stand on its own has an important benefit to the rest of the consolidation that is proposed to be under CIFD. Both sides of the House have large workloads that require completely different skill sets. By keeping economic development on its own, we are able to right-size the workload and efficacy of the AGM position at CIFD to focus wholly on workforce development, which is critical for many of us. As we know, we're all deeply committed to that work, but we want to make sure that we allow the success of that work to prevail in this new consolidated version. By moving forward with an economic development department and the expanded CIFD department, we could better prioritize both. There's been an argument that it is more efficient for EWDD to be part of this consolidation since CIFD administers CDBG grants. And EWDD, I wanted to just underscore for the record, is not the only department that receives CDBG funding. As we know, Bureau of Street Lighting, Street Services, Housing Department, there are many other departments that are also the recipient of CDBG dollars. And so suggesting that this consolidation helps to address the fact that because they both derive support from CDBG dollars, that it should all be within CIFD, actually, when so many other departments, they would basically retain the same ability to administer those dollars, just as they do for other departments, whether it's rec and parks, street lighting, street services, or the housing department, that functionality would remain the same. So this does nothing to address, this would not change that. And so, as I said in committee, and I'll say it again, and I just said it a moment ago, I believe it's critical that we measure twice and cut once. This council already showed support, when we were engaged in the budget conversation, to explore consolidating asset management functions under one roof to unlock the revenue potential of our vast real estate portfolio. There is also a strong and shared interest in rebuilding and properly resourcing a unit to carry forward the work once done by the CRA, this time under direct city control. We could explore the creation of an outside development corporation, bringing some of the planning, building and safety development functions, or even building out multidisciplinary approaches that looks at land use and regulatory incentives for supporting major industries like television and film. There are many different approaches to achieving that shared vision, but we need a starting point. And that is why I'm proposing that our strongest starting point is to preserve an economic development arm that allows us to forge a path forward to address these critical needs at a time when we need the technical experts to support us in bringing the kind of business and jobs that we want to create in the city. Maintaining an economic development arm would allow us to do that and not starting from scratch. So colleagues, I ask for your I-vote on the GIA committee recommendations so that we can have a place from which we can build a much stronger, more effective means of having a real economic development strategy for our city. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Councilmember Rodriguez. Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. Today, we have before us multiple committee reports regarding the consolidation of four departments into a new community investment department. I ask colleagues that you support the recommendations of the Economic Development Committee and allow this consolidation to move forward. I've been the chair of economic development for almost a decade, and I've worked with all these departments to implement various programs over the years, from guaranteed basic income to solid ground, to the legacy business, to the Jedi Zones. Along the way, I've learned that leadership and structure do matter. But I know there have been some legitimate questions raised, lots of questions and concerns, and so I'd like to ask the CLA, CAO, to come to the table, and Abigail Marquez. I've got a few questions, and hopefully they'll be clarifying. Thank you all for being here this morning. So, CAO, can you please clarify what the full cost of establishing a separate economic development department would be in the current fiscal year and in ongoing years?
Sure. Good afternoon, Yolanda Chavez with the CAO. I'm joined by Susie Rios Bellinat, also with the CAO, so I'm going to ask her to review the savings that have been outlined in the last two CAO/CLA reports.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Thank you for the question. Susie Rios Bellinat with the CAO's office. So our first CAO/CLA joint report identified approximately $5.3 million in short-term annual savings. Sorry, let me back up just a moment. We do not anticipate any savings in the current fiscal year, '25, '26, as a result of any of these proposals. All of these would be starting '26, '27. So our original report recommending consolidation identifies $3.5 million in salary savings, $1.8 million in lease and operating expense savings, for a total of $5.3 million. The standalone economic development department proposal identified that $1.4 million of the savings that we had previously identified would be eliminated by retaining positions that had been proposed for deletion, and an additional $2.8 million in staffing costs would move from the proposed consolidated department to the standalone EDD, which would then require an analysis to determine how many additional positions would need to be created in the consolidated department to backfill or create like-for-like positions, and that is a $2.8 million cost, up to $2.8 million, so a total of $4.2 million in costs for the proposed standalone department.
So I also just want to add that what we did not include in the savings was the positions that had already been eliminated in the current fiscal year, and our latest CLA/CAO report notes that if a standalone economic development department were created, as the portion of the general fund to support that department would continue to grow. So it would start currently, let me just ask Susie, what is the portion of the general fund and how much more it would grow with the standalone, so there would be additional fiscal impact on the general fund?
Right, so the current Economic Development Division within EWDD is funded about 51% by the general fund, the rest by special funds. Many of the admin and financial positions within EWDD support folks across the department, so that's economic development folks as well as workforce folks. They are leveraged with workforce dollars. Removing those folks into a standalone EDD would shift their funding source primarily to the general fund, and the economic development report actually projects that the economic development general fund allocation would go from about 51% of the budget to over 70% of their budget. So the general fund would be supporting 70% of the costs of a standalone EDD department.
Do you have a comment? To, again, CAO and CLA, your report mentions efficiencies that are going to be achieved by consolidating. Can you provide us with an overview of what these efficiencies are and how a separate economic development department would impede some of those efficiencies?
So there are a variety of efficiencies that could be achieved, but one of the primary ones is really pooling admin staff, right? Folks that support the program staff. Both the Youth Development Department and the Department of Aging are smaller departments. Department of Aging, I think, is 41, Youth Development is under 20, I believe. And so being able to be part of a larger department allows those folks in those departments, which would become smaller units within the larger department, to benefit from the administrative staff, the financial staff, and the executive staff of a larger department. Similarly, Economic and Workforce Development Department, the vast majority of the admin folks would be moving over into a consolidated department and would be able to support these smaller departments therein. If a standalone economic development department is created, you would be replicating some of the issues that have already been identified in the under-resourcing of admin folks at departments like YDD and Aging, and replicating that in the new standalone department.
Councilman, I think we also found that if positions, you know, individuals want to advance.
People might pull up.
Yes. If individuals want to advance in that department, that there'll be more positions, and people could take tests and still stay with that same department. Usually, when you have a very small department, when you have attrition, it's very difficult to backfill those positions.
Ms. Marquez, you've been acting general manager now of Aging for the past several months. What have you been able to do since taking over the department, and how do you think you'll be able to achieve some results going forward?
I'm sorry, councilmember, I missed the first part of your question. Can you repeat that?
No, the question was about your role at Aging and what you've done so far there.
Thank you. I was appointed interim general manager of the Department of Aging on October 20th. When we started in that role, we were able to leverage some of our administrative staff. Our assistant general manager over administration and financial management stepped in immediately. The Department of Aging currently has approximately 90 contracts that are in a July 1 through a June 30th cycle. When we started on October 20th, six contracts had been executed. Since then, we were able to leverage, again, the administration and financial management unit. We were able to also borrow some of our CIFD staff to support the Department of Aging, and in seven weeks, we've executed over 70 contracts for the service providers that are under contract with the Department of Aging. We've also been able to leverage our payroll supervisor. The Department of Aging did not have a payroll supervisor. They are using an accountant to support the payroll needs of the department, so we were able to leverage our payroll supervisor, our contracting staff, our procurement staff. What's really challenging is that with small departments like Aging, which has about 42 staff, they are wearing multiple roles. Right now, the team that is responsible for the monitoring was also doing the contract execution, and those should really be two separate functions. So we've have, I've already seen efficiencies in these very few weeks within the Department of Aging.
Those are all the questions I have at this time, Ms. Chair. Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I have no further questions at this time. I don't know if there are any other questions on the queue.
Okay, I've got Mr. Soto Martinez.
Mr. President, I don't have questions for the staff. I do have comments, but I can wait after the question portion is finished.
All right, anybody with questions for the staff? All right, Councilmember Rodriguez.
So I just wanted to clarify. You indicated in terms of the demands on general fund for what, can you repeat what you?
Based on the staffing proposal submitted by EWDD for a standalone economic development division, department, sorry, the demands on the general fund for those folks would go from approximately 50% of their budget covered by general fund. go from approximately 50% of their budget covered by general fund today to approximately 70% in future years.
Okay, and the consolidation, as it stands, CIFD would be 81% of the general fund, right? With the looming cuts in impacts to potentially CDBG dollars as well. So, I think it's just, I think it's important to establish that. The other question I had was, in terms of the true cost of consolidation, what hindered the ability to give us a real number about estimating what the true cost of consolidation is? Because we've talked about from simple staffing savings, but the real financial impact of consolidation, as I indicated, is in the systems integration. What does that cost?
So, we are, so I wouldn't know, I guess we do not think it's actually going to be a cost. We think it's going to be a savings, because when you integrate your administrative resources, that's when you actually save general fund dollars.
But systems integrations are not cost savings. They're actually, they're a cost encumbrance. I mean, CL, let me ask Chris, is that your understanding?
Well, our report does identify that there will be costs, and so one of the ideas in the report is to not only consolidate the departments, but jointly house them over at the Mangrove, at a building that we own over at the Mangrove site on First and Alameda. So, there will be costs to pay for these computer systems, to build the tenant improvements. So, there are costs, and we do note it, but we don't put a number on that.
Right.
But the reason we don't, Councilwoman, is because that number is still being estimated. We do have the space planner looking at that for CIFD.
Right.
But I think that the other part of the savings that we cannot provide you at this time is the savings from streamlining these systems and being able to coordinate their systems better. So, that's the one, so that's, the other thing we say in our initial report is that those savings we will be tracking to be able to report on later.
Thank you, Yolanda, but I think what's important for my colleagues is that when we talk about what savings looks like, and we're making these big decisions, and you have unanswered questions about the actual cost, that's a real factor. So, you have a lot of projected savings based on the deletion of staff positions, but you're not taking into account the actual cost of consolidations from the systems integration and the facilities, the space that we're talking about. And so, you're only giving one part of the picture, and I think that's a really important, that's why I appreciated Mr. Espinoza citing that, because what this body deserves when we're making these kinds of decisions is to understand the full implications of the decisions that we're making and the financial impacts, because when we're talking about identifying greater efficiencies, it's not just in, because again, we've got to look at what efficiency looks like for the different audiences that we're attempting to serve, and making sure that we are a city that is actually attending to the needs of our diverse constituencies. So, that's why I think it's critically important for us to have that full understanding of what the costs are associated with that. And so... So, how does, how does the integration proposed to function and work when the federal guidelines have a variety of intake requirements, that not everybody is up, because this is also presupposing that everyone basically does the same functionality when you bring them all together. But federal requirements actually require something different. Mr. Espinoza, could you perhaps give some insight into that?
We did look into that in our report, and we acknowledge that currently CIFD has great expertise in managing federal guidelines, and we believe that they do have the kind of staff to be able to separate and not co-mingle certain funds and to follow federal guidelines.
Okay. Well, again, colleagues, thank you. I'll go ahead, and I don't know if there's anyone else on the queue for questions?
I'm not sure. Is anybody else on the queue for questions for staff? Councilmember Blumenfield?
Yeah, just really, just one sort of overarching question, and I'm open to the consolidation and feel good about it mostly. The part that gives me the most heartburn is the economic development issue, you know, because other cities are eating our lunch on this, and they're luring businesses, and a lot of cities have an independent economic development arm, which, both from a perception perspective and a reality perspective, is important in order to grow our economies. So, you know, what assurance can you give me that in this new consolidated department that that function won't get lost, because it is different than, you know, than the typical contract function and the incredible efficiencies I think that can get with all these departments, because you're contracting similar services with the source centers? But that one piece that gives me some concern is that, that pure economic development, which we really haven't done a great job of, and we were starting to get a strategic plan in 2020, and then COVID came, and we focused on responding to that, but there are folks at EDD, EWDD, that are focused on that, and that's, to me, is something really important I don't want to see lost. So, I just sort of throw it out to you, you know, give us the assurances that that element is going to not only remain, but will thrive under this new consolidation.
I'm happy to answer that question, councilmember, and I do agree that intuitively, economic development seems to be the function that in different cities, it's structured. I mean, really, what I was, I found most surprising when we were doing our research was that really, economic development is structured differently, vastly different in a number of cities. Some cities have it under planning, some, San Jose, which was the one most interesting, is cultural affairs and economic development. I mean, it really is structured differently. It is a policy decision that you all have to be comfortable with. What I will say is that I recognize that CDBG, as an example, is not the only funding source that supports economic development, but it's been the most consistent funding source. And as the Complan Administrator, we already support a number of economic development projects. We have, you know, CIFD is not just a social service department. We're very proud of the social service delivery and integration and the coordination that we support across multiple nonprofits. But as a Complan Administrator, which often is off the budget, you know, we don't have a lot of robust conversation on our role as a CDBG Administrator, but we do support. We're very familiar with all of the economic development projects. If CDBG goes away, we would, we would not have a really strong economic development strategy, so we do need to look at other funding sources. What I will say about the expertise is that that expertise will continue to be well-positioned with this new department. CIFD has also extensive expertise on a number of acquisition real estate projects. We worked with the mayor's office to set aside $27 million in CDBG for the acquisition of the Mayfair. We worked with Councilmember McCosker to set aside $5 million for land acquisition, and these are transactions that we led. We worked with Homeboy Industries. It was initially an economic development project for a new job training center that shifted over to capital improvement projects. So, we do have a pretty vast portfolio of capital improvement projects, over 100 right now in our portfolio. And again, those are often not recognized or acknowledged in some of these general fund conversations, because it's largely driven by our role as a Complan Administrator. But we have in-house expertise, and the expertise that is currently within the Economic and Workforce Development Department would also transition over to this new department. And I also want to just clarify that this is not being absorbed into CIFD. It is, the CIFD name will also change. CIFD is also being, the mission and the vision of CIFD would also change into this new department, which is the Community Investment Department.
And I would just add, it's with the loss of CRAs, it's also going to be creating EIFDs, and Councilwoman Park talked about trying to, emergency FDs, I forget, and a number of these funding mechanisms that we've never really used before effectively, but that are, have been, are the successors to CRAs, and that's going to be critical to getting this strategy moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Councilmember Jurado on the queue.
No, I wanted to go at the end.
You want to have part of the discussion, that's fine.
Yeah.
So, I have one question for staff, because it doesn't look like anybody else has questions for staff, so I'll go. Just, Councilmember Marquez, I just want to, I'm just Councilmember, wow, I just, sorry, my apologies. I would not wish that on you. I want to deep dive on Mr. Blumenfeld's question, because it is curious to me, as someone who represents part of the city where almost all of our deal, all of our big deals have relied on EWDD to play some role, going back to when it was CRA and, you know, had different names. The point is, the private sector won't do a deal. I don't care how good the credit is, I don't care how good the land-to-value ratio is, all the other rules that apply everywhere else don't apply in places that have been redlined, which in the city of LA, we have plenty of. I represent one of them. And absent this institution intervening, like, those deals don't get done. I can take you into buildings and offices and housing, all those things right now that, and things that are underway, frankly, that that's the case for, and, you know, I'll just invoke the name of Carolyn Hall, who I think was, you know, nearly a genius, who's been, who separated from the city as a result of this. I just want your vision for how that gap gets filled, because the part, the consolidation makes sense to me mostly, except that I, the appealing part, the most appealing part of the consolidation is that we have services for working class and poor people all in one department, so people don't have to hop all over town to get services, whether they need a job or youth services or family, whatever. So, they, I like that part of it, but this particular piece of it, I just, it's not entirely clear to me. I believe that you have a vision, but I wanted you to talk about that on the record, for how that work goes.
Thank you for that question. My response is, you know, I joined the city 22 years ago under the Community Development Department, and it was the vision of that department that drew me to the city. And the way that I would continue to lead on economic development is integrating economic development as part of a larger community development strategy. It's putting people, recognizing the individuals in these, in these communities as our greatest assets. That's how I would treat economic development. I don't think that a consolidation needs to compromise the integrity or the individual, the autonomy of economic development functions. I do think that there is a lot, the work that the department is doing is incredibly important. We are the only city that has a business source model. That business source model was established when we were on all one department, and it was the business source, the work source, the youth source, the family source, and there was an intentionality behind these models so that they could be better coordinated and integrated with one another. I do think that we have an opportunity to leverage other funding sources that we're not currently tapping into. The real estate portfolio of a department is very exciting to me, because it creates opportunities to really revitalize neighborhoods in a much more holistic way, bringing in the community organizations that we currently work with. So, the commitment that I have to you is to continue to learn, to continue to adapt, and to continue to leverage the expertise. I want to emphasize that I have not been an expert on all things in my 22 years, that I've, you know, I've different roles that I've assumed, and I do take the time to understand the intricacies and nuances of all of these different regulations and how to best leverage resources so that we can maximize our impact and be effective in how we deliver resources and services. And again, I just want to emphasize that this consolidation, the way that I would structure it, has this broader vision around community revitalization and really leveraging state and federal dollars to drive economic development from this place-based perspective and to, you know, really look at how to engage the entire community in this process.
Got it, thank you. Okay, I think we are down to folks who want to discuss the general matter, so we'll thank staff and excuse you one more time? Sure.
So, I just wanted to point out, because Mr. Harris Dawson, I appreciate what you, what your apprehension is and what you raised, and I just wanted, for the sake of just really providing some clarity around what we're talking about, economic development doesn't solely exist in areas that are eligible for CDBG. It's, economic development strategies are the ability to engage in very technical and business-oriented conversations at a higher level than just around CDBG investments in a community. It also goes beyond just doing facade improvements. We're talking about the ability for us to attract and bring in business investments in our city at a much higher level. And so, that's why what I'm proposing is that we're talking about the economies of scale and the consolidation of the portions that you already discussed, or that you already highlighted, which makes sense. But as we also, also established, is that there are many other cities, and we have discussed this even in budget, when the council unanimously adopted the motion that I introduced about our ability to manage the assets and leverage it for more of a revenue-generating opportunity. That's the type of work that we also concurrently need to be engaged in. And my concern, as we've seen, when departments are eliminated and functionality is transferred and lost, the re-establishment and building out that work takes years, and we are already in an economic climate where we can't afford to lose more time. We can take all the functional pieces that we're saying we're prepared to consolidate, but preserving this one piece that would allow us to maximize our effort, to generate revenue, and build what we're looking for as a functional economic development arm in this city, doing that concurrently without losing more time, because we can't afford to lose any more time, given the economic circumstances that we're facing right now as a city. We need to have the technical expertise to be able to engage in those conversations. That's why we're talking about staffing levels. There are a much higher level, because dealing with those corporate entities or whatever business opportunities that we want to attract into our city require that level of expertise. So, again, that's why I go back to, it's better to measure twice and cut once. We should understand the full implications of the decisions that we're making. We're talking about negligible proposed savings, but we can't even verify that they're actual savings, because of the absence of the full breadth of the costs associated with consolidation not having been provided. So, I just, I just wanted to take an opportunity to devtail on what you just raised and what your concerns were, because that's what this is born out of, and it just allows us to ensure that we can continue to be on that path, to support the needs that we have as a city, to maximize and start building a more structured and focused economic development arm for the city. And that's what, that's what the GIA report proposes, is the consolidation of all those other pieces. It's a yes and. It's not a no, it's a yes and.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. All right, and thank you to the staff. I've got Mr., I've got Councilmember Jurado, and then I've got Councilmember Soto Martinez. And I think, and we're now, just everybody, we've shifted to discussion of the larger matter.
Council President, I'd like to call the question. We have had, heard this in EDJ, civil rights, government efficiency, the Budget and Finance Committee, everybody has talked about this, so I'm calling the question. I know it will require 10 votes, because everybody hasn't been able to speak, but that's, I was going to wait until after Soto Martinez, but you called me now.
Is there a second to Ms. Jurado's, Ms. Ramon?
There's a lot of seconds.
Yes, so there is a second. It's Councilmember Ramon, and so, as the council member summarized, it will require 10 votes to pass. It is not debatable.
All right, let's open the roll on ending debate, close the roll, tabulate the vote. All right, we're going to do it again. Clerk wants us to do it again. Let's open the roll on ending debate, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, 2 noes.
You have to tell us what that means.
So, the motion passes, so the debate is closed, and then council can move on to voting on the actual items. I, I believe the clerk's office summarized sort of the order in which we will take this up, uh, but just to reiterate, because I know that we had a robust discussion earlier and questions answered, the first item before council, and I will let the clerk's office correct if I'm wrong, is Amendment 52D, introduced by Councilmember Rodriguez, and that is to amend Recommendations 5 and 8 in the EDJ report. After that, council will vote on Motion Price-Soto Martinez to adopt the EDJ report, and then the third and final vote will be on Motion Rodriguez-Blumenfield to adopt the GIA report. Please keep in mind as you're, you're voting on specifically the second and third item, that they are in conflict, meaning that you should ideally only vote for, for one of them or in favor of one of them. If both are approved, then the last one that is voted on is the one that will ultimately be approved by this body. Thank you.
All right, uh, so, Madam Clerk, we're opening the roll on Amendment D is in dance?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's open the roll on that amendment. Close the roll. All right, we got some computer malfunctions.
We will clear it and vote again.
All right, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
7 ayes, 8 noes.
Uh, the amendment fails.
All right, what's next?
Next is the vote on Motion Price-Soto Martinez, and that is to adopt the EDJ report.
All right, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, 3 noes.
All right, what's next?
The next is the vote on Motion Rodriguez-Blumenfield, and that is to adopt the Government Efficiency Innovation Audits Report.
All right, let's, Councilmember Yaroslavski? No? All right, let's, uh, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
6 ayes, 9 noes.
That motion fails.
All right, what's next?
Okay, so, uh, just to summarize for the record, the, uh, Motion Price-Soto Martinez to adopt the, uh, Economic Development and Jobs Report prevails.
All right, so what's next?
Uh, next would be Item 74, and that is closed session, sir.
All right, let's prepare the room for closed session. Remember, uh, folks, we are doing one staff member per council office, the city attorney's office and impacted departments, so ask folks to move quickly, we're at 1 o'clock.
Right. The Tosco Theater is located in Canoga Park. There is so much already here to offer, cultural events, performances, folks do annual Dia de los Muertos festivals, there is art walks, there is musical events, there's jazz, and I feel like we have the, the privilege to be added in that offering. The space had been left a little bit weary, and so when the city came in to renovate the space, it was offered another chance to breathe new life into the arts here. The Tosco Theater is here for everyone. It is here for young artists who are just starting out, to the professional artists who are here to dream up their new vision, and we're here for the community at large at all of our community events. One of our signature events is called Walking in Our Light. This idea of how we help people to, to encourage them to think about the light that they bring and to show appreciation for those who helped to nurture that light. So from that idea, we thought, well, let's, let's walk in our light, let us have, uh, stories along the way where people can stop and hear performances and storytelling of other people saying, "This is my light, this is how I shine it, and these are the people I want to show appreciation to." So we, we do this walk around the block, and then we end up with a little gathering, performances inside, and lots of time to just reflect on, yeah, this is my light, you know, and, and these are the people who've helped me get there. Our communities don't always see what the city of Los Angeles provides them, providing access to the arts. Says to me, that's a city that's proud of the stories it wants to tell, the people who want to tell them, and the ways that they want to tell them. A space like this gives opportunity for folks of all ages, cultures, experience, to say, "I can be seen, I can be heard, and I'm walking in these doors," and it feels welcoming, it feels nurturing, and people are excited to listen to me and to hear me. We don't have that all the time. So it's a, it's a live space that's here to welcome and nurture those sparks of inspiration and vision. There's a few ways to find us. We are always on social media, so we are on Instagram, we have a Facebook page, you can go to the Department of Cultural Affairs, their website, you'll find the Tosco Theater, may take a few clicks here and there, but we try to stay present in any way that we can.
Download the MyLA311 app from the App Store or Google Play. Use Google Translate to view the page in up to 200 languages. Select the service need, either by typing a topic in the new request search box, or select from the most popular service requests, like street pavement issues or potholes. Answer a few questions, you can add a comment or even upload a picture. Keep track of your request via email, text, or create an Angelino account to become a registered user. Using MyLA311 keeps our city safe and clean.
And so across the city, the county, and the state, we stand before you united and committed to helping victims of violence, of human trafficking, of sexual assault, and other crimes that prey on the vulnerable.
Join the Department of Cultural Affairs for the 45th Annual Black Doll Show, which will run until February 14th, 2026. The show's opening reception takes place on Saturday, December 13th, and will feature live music and performances. This year's show is titled "Sower of Seeds: Creating a New Tomorrow." Through handmade and collected black dolls, the show reflects on today's uncertainties and asks what new worlds can emerge when imagination and resilience take root. Head to the William Grant Still Arts Center for the Black Doll Show opening on Saturday, December 13th at 3:00 p.m. For more details, visit wgsac.wordpress.com. L.A. City's Department of Recreation and Parks hosts Expo Center's Winter Festival on Saturday, December 13th. Join Councilmember Curran Price and Reckon Parks at Expo Park for all the family fun of this winter holiday festival. There will be music, entertainment, games, community booths, and yes, even sledding. There will also be giveaways, which are first come, first served. Head to Bill Robertson Lane for Expo Center's Winter Festival on Saturday, December 13th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. For more information, see the Events tab at laparks.org. The enduring work of Jane Austen will be the hot topic at a book discussion and tea party to honor the writer's 250th birthday. Head to the Venice Abbot Kinney Memorial Branch Library to celebrate Austen's birthday with a tea party for all ages and book discussion featuring the classic Pride and Prejudice. Tea, scones, and other delightful treats will be generously provided by the Friends of Venice Library. The Jane Austen 250th Birthday Book Discussion and Tea Party takes place on Saturday, December 13th at 1:00 p.m. For more details, visit lapl.org/events. And that's a look at some things to do.
Every day, over 100 Americans die from secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke in children can cause asthma, ear infections, and increased risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Go to smokefreehomesla.com. Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke.
City Attorney Heidi Feldstein-Soto and L.A. County District Attorney Nathan Hockman recently celebrated the signing of the Victim and Witness Protection Act into law, authored by Assembly Member Pilar Chiabo. This bill strengthens safeguards for survivors of domestic violence, human trafficking, and other crimes. The Act protects against post-charging, dissuading intimidation after charges have been filed. According to Feldstein-Soto, the bill will empower victims and witnesses to help law enforcement without fear of retaliation. For more information, visit cityattorney.lacity.gov/news. The Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, LADWP, joined with Utilities United Against Scams to give customers an understanding of how they can protect themselves. Because scammers often use pressure and scare tactics, this year's campaign offers a three-step strategy to slow down, verify, and stop the scam. To slow down, end the conversation on unexpected payment requests as the LADWP will reach out on a past-due bill and provide assistance information. To verify, customers can contact the LADWP directly by using the phone number on their bill or by logging on to their LADWP account. To stop the scam, report incidents immediately to the LADWP and local law enforcement. For more information, visit ladwpnews.com. The Los Angeles Department of Transportation has launched its Mobility Action Plan to identify long-range capital needs and is gathering input from Angelenos. The Mobility Action Plan will provide a framework for how the city invests in streets, sidewalks, transit, biking, and walking. The plan will consolidate projects across the city and include the Department of Transportation, Public Works, and other city departments. Angelenos are invited to share their experiences and priorities to help shape a transportation system that works for everyone. Participate in the survey at mobilityactionplanela.org.
Your regularly scheduled meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.
Here's what's happening in L.A. this week.
This is L.A. Current.
This is about all of us. It's about choosing to believe in our city again and proving it with action. And no matter what our city faces, L.A. never, ever gives up.
The number-one cause of preventable death after injury is bleeding. Someone who is severely bleeding can bleed to death in as little as five minutes. Minutes count. And your LAPD thanks you for learning how to stop the bleed by following the ABCs. If someone has an injury with blood spreading out of the wound, clothing soaked in blood, bleeding that won't stop, or loss of any part of an arm or leg, you need to act quickly. The first step is A for alert. Have someone call 911. The next step is B for bleeding. Locate the bleeding injury and remove any clothing covering the area so you can see the injury. The final step is C, compress. If the injury is to the leg or arm, prepare to use the tourniquet. Unwrap the tourniquet and apply it two to three inches above the wound. Do not place the tourniquet onto a joint. Go above the joint if necessary. Pull the free end of the tourniquet and wrap it until it is tight. Wind the windlass until the bleeding stops. Secure the windlass in place. Note the time the tourniquet was applied and write it down, if you can, or tell first responders when they arrive.
It isn't flashy. It isn't loud. Safe to say, it's not for everyone. But since 1869, it's been our way. To be unrivaled means being the best of the best of the best. We hold ourselves to a higher standard, one most people will never even witness. We set the table for what it takes to be the most highly-regarded law enforcement agency in the world. Surrounded by like-minded souls, we learn together, grow together, protect together. Being unrivaled is a transformative commitment, a marriage between a calling and a lifestyle, a decoration we live by day in and day out. It's doing the work expecting nothing in return. It's training relentlessly to save one more life. It's upholding justice, no matter the cost. There are no shortcuts. It demands your all. Only those who dare will come to appreciate the perseverance and sacrifice required. But those who do will wear the badge that protects the city of dreams. LAPD: Unrivaled since 1869.
The Lancashire Art Center was constructed in 1939. When it was opened in 1939, it was originally a L.A. Department of Water and Power building. The city of L.A. became the owner of the Lancashire Art Center when it was declared as a historical-cultural monument. On the plaque, its purpose was that it is an example of adaptive reuse. The front building is actually an example of streamlined modern design. And then if you come here after, I think it's like 5 or 6 o'clock, there's like lighting panels that will turn on and then you get to see the full kind of marquee of the Lancashire Art Center. We host a bevy of productions, be it dance productions, music productions. Sometimes we'll have a film screening. Art, I think that sort of flexibility is something that brings me back every time. The theater is very intimate here. It really feels like you're just right up in front of the talent when you come watch a show here. We also do youth programming here. We work with different local artists to be able to provide free programming for children to learn how to sew. We have a fashion class. We have music classes specifically for percussion and drums. We also have another music class for piano. And then we also have a dance studio. It's in our mezzanine. That is for our dance class that we have here. Our mission here is just to grow the performing arts, really. So whether it be someone trying to bring out their own original productions or like sometimes we even have different groups come in to teach after-school classes. sometimes we even have different groups come in to teach after-school classes. Being able to grow the performing arts in a community is what makes Lancashire Arts Center stand out. The city investing into places like this is because it gives a place for people that were not as confident, the ability to express themselves, and give a space for people that are a little bit different, another space to play. Because being able to play is so important, just for our mental health, as well as for the health of the community, and it just makes the world a better place. We look forward to having you here at Lancashire Arts Center, whether it be taking part in our free programming, as well as being able to come and just watch a movie or watch a show. We look forward to having you over here. On Instagram, our Instagram handle is DCA underscore LNK. You can also find out more about us on culture.lacity.gov, that's our website.
The Tosco Theater is located in Canoga Park. There is so much already here to offer, cultural events, performances, folks do annual Dia de los Muertos festivals, there is art walks, there is musical events, there's jazz, and I feel like we have the privilege to be added in that offering. The space had been left a little bit weary, and so when the city came in to renovate the space, it was offered another chance to breathe new life into the arts here. The Tosco Theater is here for everyone. It is here for young artists who are just starting out, to the professional artists who are here to dream up their new vision, and we're here for the community at large at all of our community events. One of our signature events is called Walking in Our Light. This idea of how we help people to encourage them to think about the light that they bring and to show appreciation for those who helped to nurture that light. So from that idea, we thought, well, let's walk in our light. Let us have stories along the way where people can stop and hear performances and storytelling of other people saying, this is my light, this is how I shine it, and these are the people I want to show appreciation to. So we do this walk around the block, and then we end up with a little gathering, performances inside, and lots of time to just reflect on, yeah, this is my light, you know, and these are the people who've helped me get there. Our communities don't always see what the city of Los Angeles provides them, providing access to the arts. It says to me, that's a city that's proud of the stories it wants to tell, the people who want to tell them, and the ways that they want to tell them. Experience to say, I can be seen, I can be heard, and I'm walking in these doors, and it feels welcoming, it feels nurturing, and people are excited to listen to me and to hear me. We don't have that all the time. So it's a live space that's here to welcome and nurture those sparks of inspiration and vision. There's a few ways to find us. We are always on social media, so we are on Instagram. We have a Facebook page. You can go to the Department of Cultural Affairs.
My sweater is disrupting the meeting. All right, Mr. City Attorney. All right, we got to get our translators back, go up on television and on audio and the internets. Mr. City Attorney, is there anything to report?
Mr. President, is it all right if I call the row?
Yes.
Okay. Bloomingville, Harris Dawson, Hernandez, Hut, Girado, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Part, Price, Brahman, Rodriguez, Yvonne Martinez, Jaroslawski, 15 members present in court, Mr. President.
All right, anything to report, Mr. City Attorney?
No, Mr. President, there is nothing to report out of closed session.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted and referred?
The desk is clear, sir.
All right, with that, announcements. Councilmember Girado.
Yes, colleagues, I want to thank you for all of your diligent participation in Councilmember Hut and Councilmember Girado's inaugural City Council Holiday Door Decorating Contest. I want you to meet the judges. As you see, I did not do myself any favors. And so the city attorney, I relied on the people who elected, the three citywide electeds to be the three judges for our holiday doors. And it's City Attorney Heidi Feldstein-Soto, Mayor Karen Bass, City Controller Kenneth Mejia, and I really thank them for taking the time yesterday. And now I want to present some honorable mentions. Okay, the reason why I thought about this was, or at least doing the door contest, was there's this thing online about romanticizing your life, and I want to think that outside of this being this floor and all the things that come with it, we are still a corporation and colleagues that work together, and why not bring some holiday joy and levity and figure out a little bit about our colleagues? And I think everybody really stepped it up. So only after seeing Councilmember Lee's door, apparently, per Councilmember Lee. Now, I would like to go to honorable mentions. CD 10. Okay, CD 9. And then CD 6. You really couldn't go to their office without feeling the cheer. And guess who is the runner-up? Drum roll, please, everybody. Council District 1. And are you ready to find out who won this year's contest? The answer is Council District 7. So next year, I will work on getting a better trophy, but this is the trophy that we have. And so by the power vested in me by Heather Hut and me myself, the 2025 City Council Holiday Door Decorating Contest winner is Councilmember Rodriguez's office in CD 7. And that concludes, oh yeah, winner's speech.
Really, really quickly, I just want to thank my staff for doing this on Saturday outside of working hours, I want to establish that, but the creative minds of Paula Basiniana, Christina, you know, everyone pulled together to do a good job, and they did it on Saturday. I know CD 1 staff was also there working on Saturday, so thank you.
Madam Co-Chair.
So much, Mr. Chair. I want to say it was a lot of fun planning this. We definitely need levity because 2025 has been a little difficult, so thank you to my co-chair. And then I want to rise to acknowledge something else at this time, birthdays of my colleagues, and that would be Kern Price and Tracy Park. They're practically twins. I know you didn't know they were almost twins, but they look so much alike. You see their work, it's really similar. They care so much about our city, and they work so hard for their constituents. So I want to say happy birthday to two of my favorite people. Oh, I mean, you're all my favorite people. Happy birthday.
All right, thank you so much. Any other announcements, members, announcements? All right, I'll ask everybody in the chamber to rise for adjourning motions. See if there are adjourning motions to my left. Any adjourning motions to my right? All right, with, oh yes, we need an ugly sweater picture at the table, all right? So we'll take the picture before we adjourn. Yes, can you give us some direction, Councilmember Girado, on the picture?
Oh, I said if you don't have a sweater, or if you don't have an ugly sweater and you're just wearing a sweater, then you're just ugly. That was my joke, that was my joke. Sorry, bad joke, okay, I'm just kidding. I got it from Bob.
All right, we're adjourned, and so we'll do a photo now. Thank you.